The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
I'd like to welcome you all to the Town Council meeting and ask you to join us to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first item on our agenda is the proclamation of recognitions tonight, and it is the Stephen Fliss Scholarship recipient. And John Landry will give out that award.
This is always one of my favorite meetings of the year. As many of you know, we do a lot of bickering up here on the Town Council. So it's always nice to do something that's not bickering and to give away some money, which is what we're here to do. So I want to welcome Superintendent Greeter. So thank you for coming tonight. And first, I'd like to thank Erica Robertson, who's the Assistant Town Manager, and Consular Amy Sepredini, who, along with myself, we make up the Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship Committee. This year, we got quite a bit of submissions, which is nice, because in years past, we haven't received so many. So there was a crowded field out there this year. And they were all wonderful, which is a true testament to our school district. And, you know, it was a tough choice, but ultimately, we did end up unanimously selecting Jordan. So I'll just tell you a few things, a few accomplishments that Jordan has. First, he's the president of his Peer Leaders Organization, president of the Project Haiti Club. He was a teacher at a religious school, camp counselor at Winding Trails. He made two trips to Haiti to build houses and organized a fundraiser to raise money for victims of the typhoon. And he's goalkeeper for two different soccer clubs in town. I don't know how you found time to do that. So Jordan is pursuing his passion for serving and teaching others, especially those less fortunate. And he stated in his application that the opportunity to advocate for those who do not have anyone to speak for them would be a dream come true. So hopefully, this small token will help you towards that dream, and we'll be excited to see that dream come true for you. So with that, I'm going to read what we call a resolution of commendation, which will acknowledge your receiving this scholarship. Whereas the Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship was established in 1985 and dedicated to Stephen A. Fliss, who served as Town Manager of the Town of Farmington from 1955 to 1985; and whereas the scholarship was established for Farmington residents seeking a college degree in public administration and/or public service; and whereas Jordan Cyclick of Farmington submitted his application to the Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship Committee; and whereas the Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship Committee unanimously chose Jordan Cyclick's application and has approved a scholarship award of $500; and whereas Jordan served as a teacher and a community service group member of his faith community, served as the president of the Pro- excuse me, Project Haiti Club, going to Haiti twice on building trips, as well as the president of the Peer Leaders, and successfully organized a fundraiser at Farmington High School for typhoon victims while playing goalkeeper for the Farmington High School Soccer Team and Farmington Sports Arena; and whereas Jordan Cyclick will be attending college where he can continue his dedication to public service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Farmington Town Council commends Jordan Cyclick on his scholarship award and hereby encourages his continued success with his future studies. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this ninth day of May, 2017, Nancy W. Nickerson, Farmington Town Council Chair. Would you like a photo? Opportunity here.
Sure.
Oh, I got it.
Thank you. There you go. You're welcome. Our pleasure. Oh, and you get a hat, too. These are highly coveted in this town.
Congratulations. And next, we have Michelle.
And as John said, this is one of the most fun nights, to be able to give awards, whether monetary and also recognition for students, for people, the young people in our community. And tonight, we actually have two gals that are going to be getting the gold award tonight. And I have the honor of doing the first award to Michelle. And Michelle, to actually, by the time that she has now, she's standing here before us, she has gone through a cadet journey, which meant that she had to complete awards and a project there. Then she had to do a minimum of 50 hours to get her silver award, which was the highest award for a Girl Scout cadet. During this time, she obviously showed leadership by being organized, determined, and dedicated to improving her community. And so many things that are done with the Girl Scouts are done for their communities. After completing her senior and ambassador journey and earning the Girl Scout silver award, she next spent a minimum of 80 hours on the project that brought her to the gold award. She had to choose the project that she would do, organize it, and complete it. That took many hours, the 80 hours, a minimum of 80, to achieve that award. The gold award is a seven-step project, and it's addressing a community problem. Here, she was a role model and a leader, as she was during her years as a Girl Scout and coming to this culmination of her Girl Scout career at the gold award. This gold award recognizes the extraordinary efforts of extraordinary young women. And within the number of eligible Girl Scouts, 5.4% actually become, actually attained the gold award. So that says quite a bit. And you should be very proud of yourself. Your family should be proud. It takes a lot of dedication, commitment, a lot of hard work and energy to achieve this gold award, and you should be very proud of yourself and all the help. So with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Girl Scouts of America help train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future; and whereas many of our young, our youth participants in activities of the Girl Scouts of America which benefit our community; whereas one of the crowning achievements of Girl scouting is the attainment of the Girl Scout Gold Award; whereas Michelle Mordaskowitz from the Girl Scouts of Connecticut Council recently completed the requirements for the 2017 Girl Scout Gold Award; and whereas Michelle Mordaskowitz's Take Action Project aimed to raise awareness about domestic violence and address ways victims can protect themselves through her event, Breaking Silence, Fight Against Domestic Violence; and whereas Michelle Mordaskowitz worked with the community organizations to raise awareness and advertise for the event and collected donations for the Prudence Crandall Center; and whereas Michelle Mordaskowitz utilized multiple platforms to reach a larger audience to raise awareness, including the Hartford Current, the Valley Press, the Farmington Patch, and created a website to create a long-lasting impact on the fight against domestic violence. And now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, I hereby extend to Girl Scout 2017 Gold Award recipient Michelle Mordaskowitz our best wishes, and we hereby proclaim May 10, 2017, as Michelle Mordaskowitz Day in Farmington, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this ninth day of May, 2017, Nancy W. Nickerson, Farmington Town Council Chair.
Congratulations. And.
Thank you.
And Nancy talked a lot about the extraordinary effort that goes into achieving the gold award. And Isabella's project was to start direct and fund a fourth-grade book club at West District Elementary School. And she made such an impact there that I actually have something from the principal, Peter Michelson. And I will read what he said about her project, because I think it sums up really well. But he said that planning, organizing the book club events involved a great deal, obviously, of time and commitment. And during that time, Isabella never missed a deadline or neglected any detail. He said as a result of this work, the faculty and the students at West District saw Isabella develop her organization, communication, and leadership skills. And the students she worked with loved seeing her so much each week that they over-prepared for the meetings just to not disappoint her. She improved their reading and discussion skills, and in that capacity, she provided a tremendously valuable service to our school community. So that's certainly something to be very proud of. This is what strong communities are made of, and the future certainly looks bright with Isabella already making a tremendous impact. And I think she may have done a great deal to inspire a new generation, too, because I've heard a lot about how the kids there really looked up to her. So congratulations. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Girl Scouts of America help train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future; and whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Girl Scouts of America which benefit our community; and whereas one of the crowning achievements of Girl scouting is the attainment of the Girl Scout Gold Award; and whereas Isabella Alfano from the Girl Scouts of Connecticut Council recently completed the requirements for the 2017 Girl Scout Gold Award; and whereas Isabella Alfano's Take Action Project started a fourth-grade book club at West District Elementary School where she planned portions of readings to be completed each week, along with discussion and activities; whereas Isabella Alfano, with the assistance of her troupe, raised enough money through a bake sale to supply each fourth grader, the librarian, and the literacy specialist with the four books in the series that the book club participants were reading. We're all kind of dying to know what the series was. What was it?
Oh, it was like, it was a series by Katie Calvi, and it was Melonhead and Lucy Rose.
Okay, Melonhead and Lucy Rose. People were asking. And whereas Isabella Alfano's passion for literacy and sharing the enjoyment of reading with others enabled her to establish the successful book club that West District Elementary School will continue each year, so she will have lasting impact. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, I hereby extend to Girl Scout, to, I hereby extend the Girl Scout 2017 Gold Award recipient Isabella Alfano our best wishes, and we hereby proclaim, I want to get the date right, May 9, 2017, as Isabella Alfano Day in Farmington, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this ninth day of May, 2017, Nancy W. Nickerson, Council Chair. Congratulations.
And you, too? Farmington hat. Thank you very much. And congratulations again to both of you for your award tonight. Next, we have another recognition. Mary Ellen.
Good evening. A number of years ago, the Fire Department established an award, and it's a citizen recognition award, and we present it when members of the community step forward to help the Fire Department in their mission in preserving life and property. And with that, I would like to first invite, we have two recipients tonight. First one is Mr. Ross McKee, and the second one is Mr. Rosario Rafa, who is not able to be here tonight. At this time, I'd like to invite everyone from the Town of Farmington Fire Department, Police Department, American Medical Response, Ambulance, Yukon Hospital, that made up the chain of survival on February 2, 2017. So the chain of survival is from the American Heart Association. There's five links that will align to complete a chain that allows somebody suffering a cardiac arrest the best chances of surviving. And they start with immediate recognition that there's a problem, calling 911, early CPR, early advanced life support, and integrated post-cardiac arrest care. And if all of those things happen in a quick sequence, the chance of somebody surviving a cardiac arrest is significantly improved. And on February 2, 2017, that exactly happened, and I'd like to introduce Chief Nelson, just to summarize the events of that day.
Thank you, Director Harper. It was just before lunch at the fire station on a Thursday in February when the staff noticed on the CAD screen that Farmington Dispatch was triaging a serious medical call at L.A. Fitness located at 1600 Southeast Road. The crew of Kevin Moriarty, Dennis Fraseo, and George Sticke got into Medic 11 and started towards the facility when the Fire Department was dispatched at 11:43. They arrived at 11:46, just three minutes after the dispatch, and were met by facility staff personnel who swiftly led the team to the men's locker room. They encountered a patient in cardiac arrest with bystanders Rosario Mark Rafa and Ross Robert McKee performing CPR. The Fire Department EMTs were provided a patient assessment by Mr. McKee and continued EMS care. The patient was transported to John MC Hospital by AMR paramedic Matt Poliselle, his partner Matthew Kressel, and firefighter EMT George Sticke. We would later learn that the patient was discharged from the hospital only a few days later with a full neurological recovery. We feel that this might not have been possible, and likely not have been possible, without the immediate and decisive efforts of Mr. Rafa and Mr. McKee. As a result, we stand here before you tonight to recognize their actions.
With that, I'd like to present to Mr. McKee the Town of Farmington Fire Department Citizen Recognition Award. Whereas the Town of Farmington Fire Department is dedicated to providing for the safety and welfare of the community through the preservation of life, property, and the environment by maintaining a constant state of readiness through firefighter training and public education; and whereas on February 2, 2017, Ross McKee assisted the Town of Farmington Fire Department in fulfilling this mission; whereas on February 2, 2017, Ross McKee came to the aid of a patron at L.A. Fitness who was in cardiac arrest; whereas Ross McKee's decisive action of performing cardiopulmonary resuscitation most likely saved a life. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Town of Farmington Fire Department, I formally and publicly bestow upon Ross Robert McKee a Citizen Recognition Award for making the choice to step forward and save the life of a fellow human being. Congratulations.
Right place, right place at the right time, that's all.
Thank you so much.
Quick question. Mr. McKee, where did you learn CPR?
School. I'm not trying to send you any, through medical education.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next, public hearing, none. New items, none. At this time, I'd ask if anyone would like to address the council for public comment. Just come up to the podium.
for 27 years on Sarah Drive, which is a good golf shot from here. I come tonight to speak in support of what I, when I say I, I really should say we, the neighbors feel, is a just resolution to the original request for a easement to go over the open space land. In my limited knowledge of open space, open space is generally defined as either land in its natural state or land under agriculture. And we support that, and we support the denial of the easement and the approval, which I believe will take a couple of steps, of assigning a conservation easement to that poor parcel of land. So we appreciate your indulgence in listening to us. I especially appreciate the work that the town has done. They found the file, and they put a lot of effort into it. And as I said at a meeting earlier with Kathy and Nancy, this is certainly not the highest priority of the town, when you think about snow blowing and fire and so on. But I appreciate your attention. Thank you very much.
Sure. Other public comment?
Okay. Our next order of business is the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the April 3, 2017, regular Town Council meeting.
Second.
Any corrections or changes? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed abstentions? Okay. Kathy, communications.
You have two pieces of communication in your packet. One is from me to the representatives about the underfunded teacher, funding teachers' pensions in the municipal budgets, and so it's just another correspondence to them, telling them that this is something that the Town of Farmington is absolutely against. And the second item is a correspondence from William Colton, who just spoke on Sarah Drive, basically asking the council to put a conservation easement on the piece of property that was discussed, I think, back in February. Time flies so fast. One of the things, if you remember, the neighbors had come in, and there was an agenda item about the town granting an easement over a piece of property. And when the neighbors had come in, they had expressed that there was much more to this story than I think I was aware of, even though it happened back in 2001 or 2002. And at that time, I went by and looked through the files and could not find any really correspondence to it. Lo and behold, in a place where it probably shouldn't be, in a building file, I found a big file on the topic. And so I was able to research the topic. And in researching it, and the history of the property, and talking to the town planner and the assistant town planner, I think that piece of property was, the intent was to be an open space piece of property. And I think in speaking with the town planner, a very good solution would be for the Town Council to grant a conservation easement over that piece of property. If you wanted even some more, you could, as a council, grant a conservation easement, and seven councils from now, you could take the conservation easement off. If you wanted to have more protection, and what we've done in the past is that we could grant that conservation easement to the Conservation Commission. So they would be the people that would hold the easement over the piece of property, which I think is appropriate, too. And what my thoughts would be is that they, which is not required, is that if for some reason, which I can't imagine would ever happen, they wanted to take the easement off the piece of property, they'd have to hold a public hearing on it, and that would at least notify the neighbors of it. So those would be my two suggestions. If that council was interested in doing that, I think the intent was that that piece, it's the parcel, would be an open space piece of parcel, and we could draft a conservation easement up. And how the process would work is that there would be an easement, you'd see the document, you have to send it to an 8-24. If you were interested in having the Conservation Commission be the grantee, you would send it to them, they would say they would do it, and then it would come back to me, and then I would sign the conservation easement. So again, this is for discussion, but I thought this seemed like a good solution.
And we did talk with the planner and actually did call and speak to the Conservation Commission, Commissioner that had there, and they felt, all of them felt, that this was a way to resolve the situation. My concern was that the people on the road don't have to come worry every year that something's going to happen. And when Kathy found all the information, we could put it together and hopefully have a resolution that's going to go through many years. So that, I think, and I think that night, we clearly, the council really felt that was something we'd like to look towards. So I would ask that you, I'm hoping that you will have a consensus to have Kathy move forward. She'd bring the information to us at the next meeting, and then we'll just let it go through the channels of TPZ and the Conservation Commission. So.
I agree.
Kathy, a question on this. We acquired this piece just as part of the development of that Sarah Drive neighborhood. When that happened, many times we have a development like that, they give us open space, the town.
Right. Yes. And it, there's, it's a very big file, because a lot of things have happened in the past. And I think when the development was done, the intent was to do that. But back in 2000, they granted an easement, and it was, there was a lot of things going on with it. And then we were granted another piece of property in a legal battle that came along with it. And if you really researched what happened, I think the original intent from way back was that that piece of property was part of the development, and it should have been open space. And it wasn't treated that way back in 2001. And that's where I think there was a lot of confusion and things. And that's when I went through the file and went through the history of it.
So I think our movement forward right now is a good direction. My question is, are there other parcels out there that we've acquired through the development process that we don't have a conservation easement on?
No. I mean, I can't say unilaterally, no.
Yeah, okay.
But again, I think this was an exception. I think how it was developed, there was some oddities to it all along.
Thank you.
So is, I think that's everybody's, okay. So we'll move forward.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Report of committees. Yukon, no report. Land acquisition.
Well, at least I can say I have a report tonight. This evening, we're going to set a public hearing for the purchase of 13 acres at 440 and 8658 Plainville Avenue. And we'll probably discuss it a little later in our meeting when we put it on, read the motion for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Green effort.
So as you probably know, we had Farmington Cleanup Day this past weekend. I want to thank all the people in Farmington who got out and helped clean up our town. So just so everybody realizes the impact, the people who went out and partaked in that effort collected over two tons of trash off our streets. So we cleaned up many of the streets, we've cleaned up many of the riverbanks. It was a tremendous success, and it was really a joint effort. I think that, you know, the school systems, both Miss Porter School and the high school and some of the elementary schools did an excellent job. The scouts, both the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, were out en masse, did a tremendous job. EBM had their workers go out and pick up trash. So it was a tremendous effort all the way around, and there was a number of individuals who picked up a lot of trash. So for all the people who volunteered last Saturday, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. That's a great day, John, two times.
All right.
Joint Town of Farmington, City of Hartford. Just the update is that we now know that it was the property, Patterson Park Road, was formally transferred to the pension fund. It's in that process now. So we expect by the end of June or July, we will have an RFP going out, or Hartford will have an RFP going out for that property. And we are hopefully going to have a meeting in the very near future with them to discuss that as well, so. Bike Advisory Committee.
We have a meeting this Thursday.
Okay. Gateway.
Nothing new to report.
High School Building Committee.
So at last week's meeting, the Building Committee approved spending schematic drawings and the project cost estimates to both the Board of Ed and the council for our approval. They are going before the Board of Ed on Monday, May 22, and they are coming before us on Tuesday, May 23. So we'll be getting the full presentation, all of the details, and that'll be time for us to ask, obviously, any questions that we want of not only the Building Committee, but the professionals, the architects, the construction manager, all the people involved. So that will be happening, and I know that there's a paragraph in the Town Manager's report about that as well. So I'll let, I'll leave that, I think, until then.
Okay.
And they are coming before us on Tuesday, May 23. So we'll be getting the full presentation, all of the details, and that'll be time for us to ask, obviously, any questions that we want of not only the Building Committee, but the professionals, the architects, the construction manager, all the people involved. So that will be happening. And I know that there's a paragraph in the Town Manager's report about that as well. So I'll let, I'll leave that, I think, until then.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Report of the Council Chair and Liaisons. Chair report. We had a regional meeting last week and one of the, obviously, the hot topic was the budget. And what our representatives told us was that, which most of you have read, is now that we're looking at a $5 billion deficit in the next, the couple, next couple of years of the budget. So that's certainly something that we need to keep on top of. We were told that Friday, this Friday, that the governor was going to come out with a, whether or not it's the full budget, but come out with news about the direction. I know today, I just heard on the news recently, that at first it was no increase in taxes and now there was the possibility of increasing in taxes. So I don't think, you know, we don't really know where we're going quite at this point, so we'll find out. And we will have more of an update. Joe's going to give us an update of where we are this year and what the budget looks like with grants and all the information that we need to be aware of. Also, they talked about the possibility of 4,000 layoffs in the state. Also, what is concerning to me is the discussion about the community colleges. There was a discussion about how they're going to be downsizing possibly other schools. I know they've closed some to begin with. But there was a conversation about the fact that Tonx's Community College, the enrollment's gone down and they're looking at everything. So I think we really need to be on top of everything right now and be careful about what's going on and just watchful. So the things could touch our town much more than we may be aware or that we may know at the moment. So just more to come and we'll see. Oh, the other thing that I wanted to mention is, in a very happy note, if you've been on the Unionville Bridge, half of it is painted. So hopefully, the other half will be painted in the near future. And it looks wonderful. So our persistence has paid off. So that's it for now. Board of Ed report.
The Board of Ed report is basically, on May 25, they will start their negotiations with, for the nurses' contract. And then on June 20, will be the last day of school. And Farmington High School graduation ceremonies will be held that evening.
On the 20th?
On, yeah, on June 20. I think it's Tuesday or Wednesday, I think.
Yes, it's a Tuesday then. Because I think the 19th is a Monday.
Yeah.
So the 20th.
Yeah. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you. UVIA.
No report.
TPZ.
No, nothing to report.
WPCA.
No report.
Economic Development.
Nothing to report.
Human relations.
Nothing, no report.
Chamber of Commerce.
Tomorrow evening, the Chamber of Commerce will be holding their annual meeting at Farmington Gardens with special guest Luke Bronin there. And they will also be honoring Jack Nelson tomorrow evening with, I believe it's a lifetime achievement award. And Jack Nelson is past fire chief for East Farms Fire. His son, Russ, just presented the award. And then his other son, Brian, who is deputy chief, I believe, was here this morning as well, taking photos. So that's exciting for the Nelson family. And that will be tomorrow evening. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay, report of the Town Manager, Kathy.
You have the written report in front of you. Let's talk about the easy stuff first, the Memorial Day Parade. Doesn't feel like it's Memorial Day with the weather, but.
How easy is two parades, Kathy?
The parade in Farmington will start at 8:30 as the step off, and it will form up at 8:00 a.m. And we'll go to Unionville, and it will form up at 10:00 a.m. and step off at 10:30 a.m. So that is our Memorial Day Parade. I'm going to ask Joe to briefly go through our state budget estimates. You do have an attachment in your packet. If I'm reading this correctly, we've adopted a budget of $5,505,070. That's what our adopted budget. We've received to date $4,929,668. So we have not received everything that we have said. The big concern that we have at this time is that we have budgeted for our revenue sharing projects $545,804,000, and we have not received that amount to date. Again, we are not going to be in a deficit of 545,804 due to the fact that we do not budget the adopted budget, what we have said. So the dollar amount, the variance, Joe, right now would be.
It would be the 505,070 minus 4, 9, right? Basically 500 after 570.
So we're down 570 as to what was approximately, as to what was expected.
Right.
Not budgeted, but expected.
Right. We had budgeted the five, like Kathy indicated, we'd budgeted the $5,505,000. There's been a lot of changes along the way. We've gotten different notifications about various amounts that we were going to receive over the course of the year. What's actually been coming in through April is the $4.9 million. Again, the revenue sharing projects. You may recall, this actually happened to us last year also, this exact same grant, exact same amount. They held it up until the very end of the year. We got it like the second to the last week of June. We suspect that's going to happen again this year, although based on the news from last week, we really don't know what's going to happen this year. It's kind of hard for them to share revenue with us when they don't have revenue to share. But we anticipate that that will probably come in, it should come in in June. If it doesn't come in, overall, the revenue side of the budget should be okay. We have other accounts other than grants that have been doing well this year. So we should have a slight, with this, we would have, we'd probably be over budget on the revenue side, about $300,000. I'm sorry, about $500,000. With this not coming in, we will probably be around slightly less than $100,000 in a surplus, in a positive result on the revenue side of the budget. So it's, we'd like to get it because obviously it would flow into fund balance and help our fund balance situation. But if we don't get it, it's not going to cause a major problem to our budget.
Questions on grants with Joe right now? And the other, we probably won't get, right? I mean, whatever the other, I mean, the ECS, excuse me, the less, that's what I'm expecting.
No, the ECS, that's actually been a roller coaster this year. We budgeted, the amount we budgeted, we were told we were going to get more. We actually were going to get over $1.2 million. The state then, in December, started having their budget problems and the governor rescinded. He cut back our ECS grant. So we were supposed to get less, less than what we had budgeted. And then in February, we were notified that due to excess cost audit adjustments, they were going to further reduce our ECS grant. So the amount you see for the ECS grant is what we, we've received it and that's all we're going to receive. So we're actually going to receive less than what we had budgeted, whereas we started the year with the thought that we were going to get more than we had budgeted. So again, that just goes to the unpredictability of some of these grants. You really have to be conservative in estimating them.
Uh huh. Okay. Any other questions for Joe right now? Okay. Thank you, Joe.
The next item I wanted to talk about is the Farmington High School Building Project. I thought maybe I'd just go through just quickly the process, and Meredith touched on it, is that it's scheduled right now at the May 23 Town Council Meeting, which is our next Town Council Meeting. The Town Council would be considering the Farmington High School Project for approval. Our ordinance is specific, Chapter 58 of what we need to do. And so per Chapter 58, the Town Council would need to approve the schematic drawings and project cost estimates. And then the Town Council would set a town meeting and a referendum for the total project cost and refer the project to a TPZ for an eight dash twenty-four report. If the Town Council approves the schematic drawings and project cost estimates as recommended by the Building Committee, the upcoming schedule would be, June 5 would be a special town meeting at Farmington High School. One of the things that I've had a few questions about, twofold, is that at that town meeting, is the process similar to the budget process? Meaning that if there's over 300 people there, can you change anything? It's not. It's an informational town meeting. So it's just for information. The second item, excuse me, would be the referendum on June 15. Again, I was asked, would it be like the budget process? Do you need a certain amount of people that votes or anything like that? It's not. It's simple majority. So it doesn't matter how many people come out, and it's just, it's the majority. So that would be on June 15. Any changes that the council makes to the schematic drawings or the cost estimates on May 23 would need to go back to the Building Committee. The Building Committee would then have to recommend an amended schematic drawings and cost estimates to the Board of Education and the Town Council. So according to our ordinance, the process is that the Building Committee recommends schematic drawings and cost estimates to both the Board of Education and to the Town Council. The Board of Education has to approve both the schematic drawings and the cost estimates. Then it goes, then, and the Town Council has to approve both the schematics and the cost estimates. And then the Town Council's role is to choose to send it to a town meeting and to a referendum. So these were the dates that we talked about. So I just wanted to highlight the process.
Kathy, just a quick question. So if we make any recommendations on the 23, we're not going to hit the June 15 date? Or is that, is that a correct statement or no?
If you make a recommendation on something on the resolution or something that I could get, that I could work with the bond council on or something like that, yes, you probably could. If you made a significant change to the, wanted a significant change to the drawings, no, you would not make the June 5 date. The 15th date, yeah.
Is the time between the 23rd and the 5th by statute?
By the 23rd and the 5th? Actually, no. We back that, the 5th and the 15th is, the 23rd is not. We backed it out to, we wanted, the Building Committee wanted to have the referendum before everyone left for summer vacation. So we actually backed it out from the 15th and then went backwards.
But just making this example up.
Yeah.
If on the 23rd, we objected to it, we had another meeting on the 24th, and we voted for the new thing that happened on the 24th, would that make the special town meeting June 6?
No. You can't, you can't do that because if you voted for it on the next day, by the time, it has to go back to the Building Committee, the Board of Education, and then it's got to come back to you. And if you pick the date of June 15, you have to do a warning, you have to do different things. So it backs it out that way.
Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe the better way to ask that question for clarity is, what are the dates that we're up against? If it's on June 15, when, what date would you need the warning by? What day, would you need the special town meeting by?
Yep. The between, yep, the special town meeting and the referendum are 10 days. So whatever day you pick for your referendum, back out 10 days for the special town meeting.
Which is June 5.
So basically, anything can be done before June 5, as long as we get to the special.
No, because you have to have the warning.
Yeah, warning.
Which is.
Five to 10 days.
Five to 10 days is what.
Before the 5th. Before the town meeting.
Before the 5th.
But we could have the referendum on June 30.
Correct.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so we're trying to get it done before the end of June so that we can get the state application in.
Oh, so you can purchase the other draft. Right. The deadline is that once you pick the date of the referendum, you can pick any date you want, then it's 10 days to the town meeting. And then you need about 10 days probably ideally to do warnings, get the resolution ready and that type of, to have that. But we had said, and it's because also added into this equation, per our ordinance, any changes you make have to go back to the board and have to go back to the Building Committee. But we had said, really, June 23, June, May 26, at the very, very latest for the warning, which would still, I think, be difficult. Maybe even Paul said the 25th would be the better date, so.
Okay.
If I may, I think the Building Committee was also thinking not just so much summer vacation, but also prior to graduation.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Is where that June 15 date came from.
And if we felt otherwise, I mean, as far as the dates are concerned, we'd have to have a special meeting next week. You know, if we wanted to do it before the 22nd. But the board doesn't even, they meet the 22nd. I mean, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The 23rd is our date. 22nd was the board date. And what we are going to hear tonight is, and purposely so, is we are going to hear more information about, we just got the Moody's report, so we're going to hear about that from Joe and from Kathy. And that comes out every year at this time. So it's just, this is the time. And also, we're going to hear about the debt issues. I asked to have some information done so that we could see what the, where we, we know where we are now with the Building Committee at 135 or 136. But I asked to have some information about what does it mean if we get, if we have the grant, if we don't have the grant, so that we can see as a council, actually, what the percentages would be, what the mill rate would be, what does it mean per voter? I mean, they did this at the Building Committee. But we can look at it as a council and get the information now from Joe and Kathy, which I think we're going to talk about what monies are out there for us, what our debt is, and have a little discussion about that tonight so that people have a clear understanding of where we're going with the project at the cost it's at. So to have some information to be able to digest and comment on, and get more information if we want from Kathy and from Joe. So I think all of it on the 23rd is way too much, so we can get some now and talk about it, so. Okay, so Kathy, go ahead.
So just our debt issue and our credit report. So we've recently issued $42 million for our BANDs, for our treatment plant. And when we issue debt like that, we receive a credit report. So we did receive a credit opinion and a credit report. And we are very pleased to announce that Moody's assigned a MIG-1 to the BANDs, which is the highest rating available for notes, and affirmed our town's AAA rating. So that was very good news and we were very excited about that. But it's also, and I attached the report, it's important to note that this credit report states that the potential for significant increases in debt levels in connection with the proposed high school project is of concern. The report states that the higher leverage of this magnitude would reduce the town's financial flexibility, likely putting downward pressure on the rating. The report also notes that it's likely that the town would have to revisit, revise its current debt policies, which limit debt service to under 10% of expenditures if the project is approved. So this is mentioned, I think, four different times in the report about the debt. And I think that the council should, you know, have a discussion about it. We did put some information together. We have lots of information that Joe is going to show on the screen, and then we can make copies of whatever we need to have. But it's, at $136 million, there's absolutely no way we are keeping our debt under 10% for numerous years. So that's an impossibility. At $110 million, it's unlikely we're going to be able to keep our debt under 10% for, and Joe, we've done different scenarios and we'll show that. So the issue really is that it's not so much that we take on the debt and then we lose our bond rating. It's more that, I think what's, the very important words are, it's the financial flexibility, is that when you have that much debt, all good intentions that a municipality may not start taking action that a AAA bond rating town would normally do. And what the concern would be is that you would then start rating your pension fund. You would start not having your fund balance. Or our fund balance, which we've been creeping up, which they want even to be higher, you don't, you don't have the financial capabilities because you're not adding to your fund balance. Or even worse, you start taking money out of your fund balance. Your budgets start failing because the tax rate is so, is high and people aren't supporting it. So all of those things combined, that's what happens and why you could potentially be downgraded in your Moody's rating. It's a lot of different factors. And one of, unfortunately, another issue, and it's just the timing, is that the state situation is also a factor in our bonding rating and who buys our debt and things of that nature. So I just feel it's important that the council has a full picture of what, you know, the potential of, every indication right now shows that we've been striving to get in, to get our. shows that we've been striving to get in, to get our nineteen percent funding, which would bring down, state funding, which would bring down the project to a hundred and ten million dollars. That said, though, you don't, you put in your application by June, you don't have notification until a year later that you, whether you get the funding or not. So another year goes down the pike. So I think that you, a hundred and thirty-five million dollars could possibly be the amount of money that is, that's what's authorized. And the council should see that and the hundred and ten, what that does to our existing debt. As you all know, we've been talking about it, we've taken on a large, large project that we have to pay for. So Joe, with that, maybe you can take the helm and put up some slides. And, you know, we have a lot of different slides and we can make copies of anything people want and we can just look at it.
Kathy, I know that the state funding isn't approved for another year, as you say. When we go to the referendum, are we asking for a new high school? Or are we asking for a hundred and thirty-five million dollars? Or are we going to ask for a hundred and ten million dollars?
We are by bonding, it's supposed to ask for the total appropriation, which will be a hundred and thirty-five.
So as far as the referendum go, we'll sort of pretend there's no state money?
Right, right. You're supposed to ask, have the appropriation for the total amount because the total amount is what the project actually costs. And anything you get for state funding is a bonus. Then you don't have to actually, like we do for, you don't spend it.
Right.
You don't bond it.
Bond it, don't bond it, yeah.
But the whole amount has to be bonded. We did speak, we talked, had a conversation today even about the bonding. And it appears, and you correct me because I had asked this question of you, if it's a hundred and thirty-five and say the twenty-eight is what we're going to get from the state, that my question was, could we do something with a question that allows the public to say, you know, if we don't get the state funding, you know, then would we not want to move forward? Because it's a hundred and thirty-five and not a hundred and ten. So at what level does the community want to do this? And they, basically, it was no. That you have to go for that hundred and thirty-five without any kind of like codicil or anything that says the hundred and, the hundred and ten? Or that without the funding from the state, would you accept this? And we were told no, that that's not. And because I was trying to figure out everything that we could think about, to ask questions for, that are possibilities for us with this project, that was.
When, if we present this and it gets passed, what is the timeline the state forces upon us? Let's say, they're not going to make a decision for a year. We have approval from the town. Can we get approval and push it a few years? Or are they forcing us on day one to bond money and start?
Yeah, I mean, again, they, the money, they want you to start spending the money.
But I know, but when is, but there's got to be very clear rules. If they're not, they're going to wait a year to tell us, are they saying, you know, once you get the, if they, like, there should be, you have to do it within a year, you have to do it within two years. You have to start, you know, a month in because that can be relevant. In our analysis, because we have, we have two years, independent of the high school, that we're going to have a problem with debt, just dealing with the water treatment and our regular debt. If we can push this, get approval, but push this to start, or at least to bond, that the year after that, it might soften the blow a little. But it might not be possible, I'm just thinking outside of the box.
Yeah, a couple of things, I can get some clarity on that. But the first year and a year to eighteen months, we're designing. And so that's what we're, but that's still, you know, twelve, thirteen million dollars. So you have to take out, we're going to have to take money, you know.
But if you can push that a year and a half and you start to, I'm just saying, if you can push everything out a little and you look at our charts and when everything, it might make the blow less painful, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, there, yeah, I understand the question, but.
There's a procedure and there's a system and there's rules. We must, if we know the details, then maybe we can be creative.
And that's, that's all that we're trying to discuss too, Amy, is how to be creative with this. And one of the things that also with it was pushing it out, but also at what point, what I was trying to get to, and we did talk to bond people, what we're, at what point will we know we're going to get state, that we'll have a firm, yes, from the state that you are getting the nineteen percent? Or that now we're only going to get ten percent, but something from the state? And unfortunately, what we seem to be hearing is, we don't know that. And it could be, we could be halfway into the project before we know that, you know, that we're going to get that funding. And that's what today, part of our discussion was, was how can you? And it doesn't appear that we're going to be able to have that. Kathy's trying to get more information from the state to find out if we can have a time that we really know, yes, we're going to get this money or not. Because that makes a big difference in how, what you're, you know.
And when we bond it, I mean, when that money comes out, has direct impact on what our required mill rate and taxes are going to be.
Because Joe's going to show us where the ten percent falls with our policy. And yes, if it was a couple of years out, which is something that we talked about a year ago, you know, it makes a difference, but.
There was a.
Oh, Joe, there it is.
Also, I'll give you a handout on this because. What you have in front of you, this, running around, is this scenario that we did on this wholesale. Basically, looking at the dollar amount, and again, this is a scenario, this is, this isn't a. This is your worst-case scenario. And we've gone through this type of thing before. This is saying, looking at what happens when you budget, or what happens when you, what happens when you issue the full amount? And obviously, we're not going to issue the full amount of debt, but at any one time. But we wanted to see what would happen to the tax rate and also what the impact on the tax rate would be, what would be the impact on some homes? So what I did here is, this is you're taking the hundred and thirty-five point six million dollars that we were talking, that apparently is the dollar amount and factoring in the nineteen percent reimbursement rate. So up on top you see a hundred and thirty-five point six million dollars. You see the reimbursement rate, estimated grants of twenty-five, seven, seven, one. That's nineteen percent, obviously, of one thirty-five. Looking at doing this in October of twenty-seventeen, looking at an estimated or projected finance rate of three point two five percent for twenty years. What that does is, in the first year, if we were to do that in the first year, you would have one interest payment, a half years of interest payment. That interest payment would be one point eight million dollars, one, seven, eight, five. The impact of that would be half a mil, based on our current grant list. So that would basically be a half a mil based on our current grant list. The next year, and I'm not sure what happened to it, but. The next year, that would actually end up being two and a half. You would get the full year of, we had a full year of debt service. You get five million dollars, five point five million dollars in principal. You'd get three point five million dollars in interest. Your total debt service, just for this one project, would be nine million dollars, almost nine point one million dollars. I apologize for the divide, I'm not sure what's picking up. That's two point five one, two point five one mils.
There's a plus sign there, Joe, that's not supposed to be there, right?
No, it should be okay.
It was there before, right? Hit the undo button.
Can you hit the undo?
Can you just go down, sell and then copy in?
Yeah, I'm going to do that.
Just undo it a couple of times and it'll go back.
There.
That's.
No, that's not it. That's what I said, got to give Joe a second to get organized. Hard to do it on the spot.
Kathy, while he's doing that, I just ask.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
This is just overall. So I'm trying to get at the net cost and we're saying it's one oh nine, presupposing we get full state reimbursement.
Correct.
What is there, through the process of, like, the WPCA seemed to post bonding, go through some sort of value engineer process? Is there a process point at which that number gets lower through design changes? Or, you know, there's, there's what, ten to sixteen million dollars of contingency built in?
Right.
And through the process, that ten million dollars drops off the price?
Right. What's different about this project and how the water pollution control project, but you are correct, is that this project is at schematic drawings, which is very early in the process. So there's a lot of contingencies in it, there's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of things that we don't know. In comparison to the treatment plant, where we designed to, I think, ninety percent of the design. So we knew what the exact cost would be. So again, I think we are hopeful that this number is going to be much lower because of those different things, because when we know more.
And that's just for the benefit of the rest of, I mean, nobody else here sits through all these building committee meetings. But one of the things that they talked about at great length was there is, and a buffer is a completely, it's not the technical term, but there's in there anywhere from ten to sixteen million contingency for stuff that happens when you design. And I'm just, I just wanted to throw that out there, that this one oh nine may in fact come down as the process moves forward. I think that's certainly the hope of the building committee is that that comes down.
Yep, that's accurate.
Okay, I'm sorry. So again, in the second year of this project, the fourth, second, the full year, fiscal year, debt service would be nine million dollars, nine point one million dollars. That's a tax impact of two point five one mils. And then what I did going out was showing some houses, and these are real houses, except for the first one. The first one's our mythical median assessment, residential assessment. For the median residential assessment, we're talking about five hundred and eighty-three dollar tax increase just for this project. And then it shows some other houses with the values, the cost, or the tax increases for them. You can see it ranges from four hundred and eleven dollars up to, at the high end, one point, one thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. So.
So again, if your house was assessed at the median is two thirty-two, your taxes would be five eighty-two. And if your house was assessed at six forty-three, which is the last one on the sheet, your taxes would go up one thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars, right?
Exactly.
And then in between, for that one year.
One year.
One year, that's one year. So obviously, what happens after that is your interest, as you start to pay down the debt, the interest decreases. So because the interest decreases, your debt service goes down. So the mil, the tax mil rate goes down. So you pay less every year, but you still are paying on this project. Net effect is that after twenty years, again, the median house at two thirty-two, oh seventy-four, is going to pay almost nine thousand dollars in taxes for this project. And again, that high-end house is going to pay almost twenty-five thousand dollars in taxes for this, for this project. So that's, that's looking at this project, again, issuing all at once.
And a hundred, that's with the state reimbursement?
And that's with the state reimbursement. Then I was asked to look at what happens if you don't do the state, actually, let's back up. I was asked to look at what happens if you do this over thirty years. This is issuing twenty years. We normally issue fifteen, we would not, we would issue this over twenty. But I was asked, what happens at thirty years? So we did some research. And if you look at the next, look at exhibit three. It actually brings down, issuing over thirty years, that's good and bad to it. The good is that, or the bad is that, one, your estimated rate goes up to three point three nine percent. So you do pay a little bit more interest rate because you're going out thirty years as opposed to, as opposed to twenty years. There is a little bit of a penalty for that. The good news is that you do get some break. I mean, you're looking at, now at this point, the first payment being one point eight million dollars versus what we were saying before of, actually, you're going to pay more the first year, but the second year, you're going to pay less, almost, you're going to pay, instead of nine million dollars, you're going to pay almost seven and a half million dollars. It does give you a slight decrease in your mil rate. In this case, in that second year, you're at two point oh six as opposed to the two point five one. So it does give you slightly less in taxes for each, obviously, for each of the houses. Instead of five eighty-two for that two thirty, house at two thirty-two, you're now at four seventy-seven. And of course, it goes across. The bad news is that, if you refer back to the first page, exhibit one, if you look at what you're going to pay in total interest over the course of the twenty years, you're going to pay thirty-nine million dollars in interest. At thirty years, you're going to pay fifty-two million dollars in interest. So that extra ten years, that slight increase in the mil rate, in the interest rate, is actually going to result in you paying almost twelve million, thirteen million dollars more in interest cost over thirty years as opposed to twenty years. And again, if you look at those houses, you're talking about a ten thousand dollar cost for that first house versus nine thousand dollars. And if that last house, you're looking at almost twenty-eight thousand dollars in taxes over the thirty years versus twenty-five thousand dollars in taxes. So there is a penalty for going out thirty years. It does help you, it does help you, but I'm not really sure if it helps you significantly enough to incur that additional, what, thirteen million dollars in interest, you know.
Joe, there's a couple of things here, if I could. This assumes that in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, we borrow a hundred and ten thousand dollars, a hundred and ten million dollars.
Right.
But we wouldn't do that.
Right.
We would buy, during the construction period, we would be borrowing what we needed to pay that year. So when the end of the, when construction finished in twenty-two, then we would have had borrowed that full amount.
Right.
We're going to show another.
I'll show you, I'll show you another slide.
The second thing I want to talk about, this houses. These numbers of what people pay assumes that their property value remains the same for the twenty years or the thirty years?
Right.
And we assume that it's not, we're hoping that it's not, personally.
What is, there is a variable in here and that is, the tax impact actually assumes growth in the grant list every single year. Does not take into effect revaluation, but the tax impact actually is offset. I did build in growth in the grant list, average growth in the grant list. And it was probably, in looking at, you know, I looked at the last four years of growth. And so let's go with the last four years, I didn't want to capture the revale. So I took the last four years of growth, I did not factor in a revale. So you do have pretty aggressive growth in the grant list here. And if you don't have that aggressive growth in the grant list, obviously, that tax impact gets worse. If you have better growth, then it gets, then that tax impact could be less. But right now, I'm factoring in a point eight, eight tenths of a percent growth in the grant list. And again, that's pretty aggressive. And again, it doesn't factor in revale and what the impact of revale would be. I did not change the value of the homes, you're correct.
And John, one thing if you just note, just sort of if we all remember, because again, this is a snapshot, that's one thing that everyone has to realize. But the other thing is, we wouldn't bond like this, absolutely not. But if you look at year two, the debt coming in, seven million, four hundred and twenty-four dollars on line two on that chart, just remember that number because that's the number, if we bonded all together, that we'd be putting in. But we're going to show you a scenario of how it actually is going to work and you'll see what that debt number is. So this is actually, it's, we wouldn't do it this way, but that seven million dollar number is a pretty good number. So, and you'll just remember, I'll point it out when we get to our other chart.
And the other thing I would say is that even though these are dramatic numbers or maybe they're here for the drama of it, even if you phase in the debt over time, it's not going to change. I mean, you are going to get, you know, maybe the first year is a hundred dollars, maybe the second year is a two hundred dollars on top of the hundred dollars. Maybe the third year is, you know, is one hundred dollars on top of. You're eventually going to get to these numbers, you're just going to phase in as opposed to hitting it all at once.
Right, and if you borrow money later, it's going to be more than twenty years.
Right.
Well, yeah.
Okay, and that's where I want to go, John, you finish.
No, I'm finished.
In our policy, it talks about twenty years. And I didn't know how that affected, I just wanted you to speak a little bit to the twenty and thirty because what's the, what normally happens? We don't usually do thirty years, correct?
We do fifteen.
No, the state statute allows for. No, you, the state statute allows for school, state statute allows that for school construction projects, you could, you could amortize your debt out over, over 30 years. You can go beyond 20 years. Traditionally, for most debt, the limit you can go is 20 years. Pension obligation bonds and education, and school projects, you can go to 30 years. So very few peo, I don't know, we, we did a quick search to see if anybody went 30 years on a high school proj, on any type of school project. And we couldn't find anybody. We did find some 25 years, but, and I, you know, I, I, I looked at 25 years and I thought about it. And I looked at towns that have been doing 25 years. And I don't want to sound snooty, but you know, 25 years isn't really a AAA town.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's somebody who really can't afford to do it and needs to spread it out that far. Obviously, it's, it's available to us. You can do it. And it's, you know, it's not, there's nothing wrong with doing it. But not too many towns use, go beyond the 20 years. It, the whole idea behind issuing debt is to pay it off, it's the same principle as, as at home. You pay off your credit card, you pay off, you make.
So you don't have to pay interest.
Right, so you don't have to pay, you pay less interest. And, and that's the whole idea behind debt. And also it gives you the capacity, because what happens after five years, you lose interest in this project, and you want a new project, and you don't have the capacity for it. So you want, you know, I mean, it's, it's a cycle. Let's face it. It's human nature.
So Joe, typically, and this is somewhat to what, to John's point, what would the tip, in a project like this, what would the typical time be that all, that all of the debt was issued?
That really depends.
Five years?
No. It, it depends on the project. Okay.
So can you put a guess on this?
It depends on how long the project takes. And I'll show you in another slide, how, what we think, or what I think, how the project will play out, and how the, how the financing will play out. But it really depends on the project. And on some of these projects, we were talking today, the 2003 high school project has not been completely audited by the state of Connecticut. It's four, what's it, 14 years later? I guess the project officially closed out in 2007. So it's 10 years later. The state still hasn't audited that project, or completed their audit on that project. They haven't completed their, their final payment to us. And technically, if they don't give us that final payment, I still have the authority, well, the council has the authority to issue the debt to cover whatever the state doesn't pay. So we could actually be issuing debt.
On that project.
On that project 10 years later. It really depends on how, when the project closes out. That's why we're saying, a little off topic, but the, the whole sewer project. We're issuing, right now, we're issuing short-term notes on that project to avoid permanently financing that project until the project is completed. And that, and that's 2019. So we won't issue any long-term debt on that project until 2019, although it will be done by that point. So it's really hard to say. And again, I'll have a slide and a handout for you that shows you what we think is the likely scenario with the financing.
But and one of the things with this project too, is that obviously when you're doing a school project, you want to do it as quickly as you possibly can when you're in construction, because it's so disruptive. And because of that, you need the cash on hand, so you're bonding quickly. So the whole idea of spreading out the debt for a long period of time is difficult to do, because we need to, we need the money to pay the project.
Again, and we talked about this with the sewer, and it applies here also. You're talking 135 million dollar project. We don't have 135 million dollars in cash. I mean, our fund balance is, is $10 million. That's basically what we have in cash. That's available idle cash that we could advance for a project. So we're either going to short-term, going to ban short-term notes on this project to get cash, or we're going to issue debt in stages on this project in order to have cash to pay the contractors. And as they do the work, they want to be paid. So we need to have available cash. And then you have to make a balance, what, is it better to go short-term notes? Is it better to go, is it better to go bonds, long-term bonds, and at what point? I mean, if you can, interest rates are going up. They're going to be going up over the next year or two. You know, if you, if you listen to what the Federal Reserve is saying. And then the other, I mean, there's a lot of factors, obviously, that go into making, in the decisions. There, you know, one of, some of the bad news we heard today was the city of Hartford's probably going to file bankruptcy. If the city of Hartford files bankruptcy, even that rumor being out there today impacted a bond sale in Fairfield County. Fairfield County's rich. It has nothing to do with Hartford. But if Hartford goes bankrupt, Puerto Rico went bankrupt last week. All their bonds have defaulted. That impacts, you know, that's some of the factors you have to consider when you're issuing debt and when you issued that. So there's a lot of factors just beyond the project too. I mean, you know, if I thought rates were going to go skyrocketing through the roof, and I had authority to 135 million, and I saw the construction schedule, I might go $70 million. If I thought I could spend, you know, 50% of that in the next 18 months. Because, you know, like, saw the rate, just the impact on the rate alone.
But we were told today by the person talking with the bonding, that because of the state of the state, that there are a lot of bonding that won't even look at Connecticut anymore at all, which is a difficulty. But Amy.
Just taking this back to the homeowner, you've done this presentation for us numerous times with respect to water treatment. And I've written down many times, 2018, 19, and 1920 are the times that our homeowner is going to get hit with an extra bill for that decision. And I'm going to give rough numbers, but looking at at least your first chart with the 20 years, it looks like a homeowner with the average home in Farmington is going to have an extra $1,000 hit if we were to pursue this? In addition to whatever tax increase we do for any other purpose?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and that, so, so our two worst, our worst two years, we're going to add 500 each year, just from a timing standpoint.
Right. Right, yeah, you will. Just on this project, again, doing it this way, and, and this is probably, again, this, this is probably not realistic. We probably wouldn't do this, but again, for the, the value of just seeing what the impact would be. I just want to jump ahead to this last slide, so that we can go to the slide you're probably all more interested in. On this very last slide, which I guess is exhibit two in your handout.
Yep.
This shows the impact of just straight 135.6 million dollars with no, no state reimbursement. And it, the numbers changed dramatically. You're going to, in that second year, you're going to be at 3.1, a mill rate of, increase of 3.1 mils versus the 2.5, 5.1. So you, you know, you have a 0.6 increase there. And just the dollar amounts go up dramatically for, for the various homes. You're now up around 720 for that average home versus the 5, you know, the 582. You know, and, and on the, on the average home, for the high home, you're at, you know, almost $2,000.
Yeah, I mean, stating the obvious, Joe, and this has nothing to do with how I feel about the high school. You know, one of the things, for better or worse, people in Farmington love to brag about is our lowest mill rate in Farmington Valley. This will definitely shift us to many of the other towns in the valley that have notably higher mill rates and how our taxes, at least for the foreseeable future. Because we're talking about major jumps every year, not just tiny jumps. And again, you have to look at what's best for your town long-term, and you have to make hard decisions. Just, um.
You don't include the regular budget.
Joe, if I could just jump in here. If we could assume, and I know this is not going to be true, but if we could assume that the mill rate for all other things was going to stay the same. The way I read this is that in year one, it would add 3.1%.
3.1 mils.
Mils to that flat.
Right.
Right.
The next year will come down slightly to 3.02, and each year will come down.
Right.
Based on this project. These aren't cumulative numbers.
No, these are not cumulative. You would basically, again, all things being equal, assuming tonight you approve the mill rate, it would be a 26.68. So next year, you would add 3.1 mils onto that 26.68. Year after that, it'd be, you would add, it would be, you know, 26.68 plus 3.02 and so on. Because again, because the, because your principal's going down, and your, I'm sorry, your interest is going down. So, so because that interest is going down, you know, slight, a little bit every year, that, that mill rate goes down. But again, also remember that the grand list here is not equal, because the grand list is growing by 0.8. So that's also contributing to the reduction here. I mean, if your grand list went down, or again, if your grand list went down, you're not going to get that reduction. If the grand list went up, you'd get a bigger reduction. So.
So that's 0.8 every year, Joe, yeah.
It's not, it's okay.
That's important. So it's really just a point, overall, this will increase our mill rate by about three.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's not three plus three plus three. So let's say.
No, 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 it's not three plus three.
We're at 25. We're moving it to 28. We'll stay at 28 plus whatever future councils choose to do.
Right.
That's very, that's a very different answer.
Wait a minute, now I'm confused.
I'm clear now. No, now I understand.
It's your building, you're building your base.
No, no, I understand you, but you do one bill.
Yep.
And then everything else is what other coun, what other councils decide to do with other projects.
Right.
It sounds like this is going to bump us up three mill rates realistically, on average, and that's, and that's it. So it's not three plus three plus three plus three, and we're at 50.
Right, no. And like, again, looking at that average house, in the first year, they're going to pay $720.
Right.
In the second year, they're going to pay 699.
Right.
Again, everything else being equal.
Right.
So.
Well, Joe, when we're, when we're on this slide, because again, this presumes no state funding. I don't know, maybe, I'm not sure who is best to answer this question. I, it might be Kathy. I'm, I'm saying, this slide that we're at, and these numbers that we're at, presumes we get nothing in terms of reimbursement, right?
Right.
What, okay, so worst-case scenario, we put it to a referendum, it passes. That's, that's the number on the, on the question. It passes. We get zero in state funding. Do we have the ability to say at that point, okay, in light of the fact that we get nothing from the state, we would now like to change the scope of the project?
And you're saying we, meaning the council?
I mean the council.
Okay, so we're getting clarity on it, but every indication says that, no. Because there's a couple of reasons why. One is, is that you, you would have, if you didn't have enough money, okay? So all of a sudden, the bids went out, and it came in at X amount. You would have the authority to lower the scope, to fit in to what you authorized. This is the opposite. You have enough money. The voters approved a project, and that project cost 135 million. So they voted for something, and now at 25 million, you're not going to get, if you had to take $25 million out of that project, because that's what the state project says, you're not going to get what that project looks like. And that's what the voters voted for, and that's what you authorized. But that said, we are going to try to get some clarification on if there is some controls of scoping that you can do based on if you don't get funding. So we're going to try to find that out.
Right, because that, as much as we're, if we were to go to the voters with this, and the fact that the possibility is, we get the possibility 19%, that's a significant difference, in my mind, that's a significant difference from 135 to 110. And if the voters are voting on this because they think that we're getting 19% from the state, and then all of a sudden, we don't, then I'm concerned about what the, what the impact is going to be, or what the voters thinking that, that we're going to get. I mean, because we will be talking about that, and we'll be saying, we don't know for sure that we'll get it. But the expectation is we might, but with the state of the state, we don't know. I'm, you know, I'm just, that's why I was looking to be able to ask the voters at the same time, if we don't get the, the reimbursement, would you support this? And, and.
Can I be, can I be the cynica?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is kind of a precedent, then, if we did not, let's just say we did not get any state funding. We'd be, I don't know whether other communities are out there in the same predicament right now. But the, so the state doesn't even know, can even, they can't even give you answers right now, if there's no money available to us, how we can deal with a project, right?
Yeah, right. I mean.
So if we approve 135 million, we, it sounds like by the ground rules, we got to use that 135.
Bond councils, the state, everyone will tell you, is that what you're authorizing is the number. You should be, you should be, you are, we are on the hook to pay. And that's why they make you do the entire amount. And they do that because even if you said, okay, well, we're only going to go out for 100 million, because that's what we want to pay. You've designed a project that cost 135 million dollars. So it's just not good practice. So that's, that's the reasoning behind it. But I think that, Joe, I think one of the, the next slide that shows the, how we would do it, and I think what's an important point, is showing when the sewer comes in and the high school, and what our debt ratio is, and some different things. Because I think this slide is an interesting slide.
But I, just to go back to John's comment. If, if, if there's, there, it may be a yes or no answer to this. If not, that's, we'll continue, but, I mean, you can explain over time. But if we, if the school is within that, in four years, in 2022, is when we're opening the building, and when all the contractors are done, and they need to be paid. So, so in fact, if they need to be paid then, that means we have to issue all the debt. I mean, we have to go out for the bonding then, right? I'm using the wrong word.
Yeah.
Is that, is that true? So that within, so that we have to, so we don't have the flexibility of taking this out 20 years, really? We have to do it within that timeframe of four years, let's say, because that's the frame of the project. That's where I was, I know that it, the state money may not come back to us. But how do we, how does that, do we do the bulk of it because we have to pay our people, or?
Let's, I just handed out something that's probably going to be easier to look at than, than the screen. I apologize for that. But let's, this is what, based on everything that's been explained to me, this is what I think the likely scenario is for our debt over the next, say, 10 years. If you look at 1718, and the first column, 1718, total net debt, that's the 6.1 million dollars at the very top there. That's our outstanding debt obligation, our outstanding debt service obligation for this upcoming year. This is what you budgeted for. This is what we're going to pay out for existing debt. As you can see, right below, it shows the year-over-year change. So we're going to increase our, we increased our debt service budget, you may recall, for next year by $335,000. Then we, I talked about during the budget process, that we're going to issue more debt sometime, probably in the fall. How much we issue is really depend upon what happens with the high school project. If the high school project gets passed, we're more than likely going to issue 16 point, 16,850,000 in debt in October of 2017. That would be mostly made up of approximately $14 million at this point, would be the high school. The rest of it would be some projects that are out there, that are already authorized. For example, the road improvement bond. We need to issue money on that. The pumper truck that's coming due, that we, we have worded a contract for that's being built, that's 600,000. We need to issue debt for that to pay, make that payment next year. Open space, there's apparently some open space that you've already bought, and there's some open space you're looking to buy. That we would have to issue debt for. So, so that issue would probably take place. Right now, it looks like it's going to be 16,850,000 if the high school's approved. 14 million would be the seed money for the architects, for the design bid specs, all that stuff that has to be developed in the first year. The impact of that would be, it would, we would have an estimated interest payment, one interest payment after six months of $261,000. That's an estimate. That's what we would be. That's the, right here. That would be the only debt. So our total debt service for the year would be 6.4 million dollars. We have a budget of, right now, approved budgets, 102, 747, 135. So our debt service as a percent of budget is going to be 6.2%. So that's a good number. It's well below our 10%. If you look at the next column, 1819, again, our existing out debt, debt service obligation, we're actually going to see our debt, debt service obligation go down on the existing debt. We're going to be at 237. That new money issue we just talked about, the first full year of payment on that, is going to be almost 1.4 million dollars, principal and interest. So our debt service, that's the blue number, the 1.4. So our debt service for next year, that we would have to budget for, would be seven point, almost 7, 7,242,000. Now, if, again, the high school is approved, we would also have to budget some money for the next, that's, for an interest payment on the high school. What we would estimate is that, again, based on what we've seen in terms of construction schedule, we would probably, in October of 2018, do a $50 million issue. So 2018, we're doing a $50 million issue. We would have to schedule, we would have to budget for one interest payment that would be due sometime in the spring, probably April of 2019. So that's why you see 100, 812,000, 812,500 that we would have to budget for. So our debt would actually go up to. So our debt would actually go up to, from the six-point-three million, or six-point-four million, in seventeen eighteen, we would go to eight million dollars in nineteen, in eighteen, seventeen, nineteen, I'm sorry, eighteen nineteen. Assuming our budget went up by two percent, which is probably low, but see if the overall budget went up by two percent, debt service as a percent of budget would be seven-point-seven percent, which is still a good number. Interesting thing here, though, two percent on our existing budget base gives you two million fifty-four thousand dollars in new money, new spending money. Debt service alone, the increase in debt service alone would be one-point-seven million dollars, meaning that discretionary money would be seven, three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So obviously, you're not gonna, you're not gonna, it's gonna be very difficult to stay within a two percent budget increase that year. I mean, you're only talking about new money spending of three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
In the total budget, the total, overall budget?
Right. Because debt service, debt service would eat up one-point-seven million of the two million dollars.
Not just the town portion of the budget, but the overall?
Overall budget, board and town, board, town capital projects.
Okay.
Two percent?
Yes.
That's at a two percent budget increase. Obviously, not, not gonna be realistic.
Right. And this year, just in perspective, education new money was one-point-four million, and town new money was six hundred and thirty-one. And so that, no.
The percent what, oh, oh.
That's, yeah, that's the new money.
So, Joe, sort of the, the big picture I have is, we're gonna jump to that ten million dollars in debt maintenance.
Well, let's go to, yeah, nineteen, nineteen twenty is the year that really is the impact.
What is that gonna look like to the rest of our budget?
Well, again, let's just go through nineteen twenty and twenty-twenty-one and then.
The high school issues here, you have the three of them, they're only ninety million dollars.
I think that's, yep, that's a ninety-six million dollars, but don't forget, up here.
Ninety-six.
Up here, in, in twenty-seventeen, new money issue, is fourteen million dollars.
Okay.
So it's a total right there, this whole, this whole scenario is based on a hundred and ten million dollars being issued. So if you got the fourteen million dollars being issued this, this October, you have an October, fifty million dollars October of eighteen, thirty-five million dollars October of nineteen, and then eleven million dollar issue sometime probably in twenty-one. To talk, John's question, when would you do your last issue? If all, if all went right and on schedule, the last issue would probably be in January of twenty-one. And that's eleven million dollars, and that would be your cleanup issue. That would be, you know, you, you've issued the majority of your money, you've closed out the project, you've gotten your state reimbursements, and now you have to issue the rest of the money.
And, but that year, you're still paying on year three of the first issue, year two of the second issue, and then you're, and you're one of that issue. So it's just, just on top of each other.
Again, you know, looking at nineteen twenty, again, our existing debt is gonna go down. Two hundred and six thousand dollars, decrease in debt service. We're still gonna have the new money issue, it's gonna go down slightly, it's gonna be one-point-three million dollars, still one-point-three-four, it's gonna go down about twenty-six thousand dollars. But then we get that big white elephant down the street, that's the clean water fund loans gonna hit. And assuming that that project completes in, in twenty-nineteen, we're gonna have to budget almost three million dollars for our first payment on the clean water fund loan. That would be the monthly payments, the monthly debt service plus the balloon payment. So we're gonna add almost three million dollars to debt service that year. So our debt service is gonna go up to almost nine-point-nine million dollars, nine million, nine million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
And now, and these numbers don't include any of our regular budgeting.
No.
So it's like, you know.
No.
I live in a nice modest house now, but I go buy my house in Devonwood, I'm gonna have to fill it with furniture. I'm gonna have to buy new curtains to go with my big new windows. I'm gonna have to buy new, new projector screens to go in my classrooms, right?
Right.
It's safe to assume that projector screens, projectors, things like that are not included, and will be, will be asked for in a new budget upcoming.
I, I'm not sure what.
We're not gonna assume anything, but I'm just saying, we're gonna.
I'm not sure what's included in terms of FFNE in, in the school projects.
What is FFNE?
They did include FFNE in the, in the project total, John.
Furniture fixtures and equipment, so you are outfitting your school.
It's in that number.
Yeah, yeah, in the school, yes.
But again, it's going back to nineteen twenty, that first high school issue that we did, or second high school issue, we did a fifty million dollars. That first full year of debt service comes due, so we have, now we have four million, four-point-one million dollars being added to it. We're gonna pay one, a six-month interest payment on that second bond issue we're gonna do, so that's six-hundred, an estimated six hundred thousand dollars. So our total debt service for nineteen twenty is gonna be fourteen-point-six million dollars, so.
Again, that's just on this project.
Um, that's overall, that's on everything, all that, that, all authorized debt from this, at this point.
But doesn't include anything else that may come up, like a new pumper truck?
Right.
Like, what do we, our normal budget process that we do every year, which goes up, call it two and a half, three and a half percent, whatever.
Yeah.
So again, assuming.
Doesn't include any of that.
Right, so again, assuming the budget goes up two percent, one, one-hundred-and-seven million dollars, the budget increase would be two million, two-point-one million dollars, our debt's gonna increase six-point-six million dollars. So, that's the, that's the impact in that year, your overall debt is gonna go up six-point, six-point-six million dollars.
Is there any way to get a, a slide that shows what we averaged, like, maybe just take the average increase of our budget over the last twenty years, and then,
I think we.
And then add that?
We have, we have a slide coming up.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry, forgetting.
Maybe not be exactly that, but it would be close.
Something along those lines, so that we can see some more realistic numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
And then it just carries out, so then, in the next year, twenty-twenty-one, you, you start to get relief. You get a bigger reduction in your, in your existing debt service. You still have it, again, your prin, your interest is gonna decrease on your new money issue in twenty-seventeen. The balloon payment, you, you reduce your clean water fund, debt service, that goes down to two-point-three million dollars, two-point-four, because you don't have that balloon payment. You do have the high school, the first issue, you're still making payments on that. The first full, full year of the second high, the third high school issue, or, let's label it here as issue number two, two-point-nine million dollars thus come on. So your debt service overall will go up, but not as dramatically, debt service will go up about a million dollars that year.
Joe, I think if we were gonna just do like, very quick key points that we've talked about, I think that your key points are that if you look at what we've talked about time and time again, if, that, starting in twenty-twenty-one at the top, that's when our debt starts, existing debt starts dropping off, and that's the seven-twenty-six, the nine-forty-eight, the one-million-six. So that's the, where we've always been talking about, that you've had the capacity to take on more debt. So I think that's important to note, that that's where it does. And then, the other thing is, is that, you know, again, starting in nineteen twenty, you're taking on fourteen million dollars worth of debt, and we have a, a charge thing, and it goes up to fifteen million at the height, and then it starts coming down into thirteen. But the other thing is, I think the other important point to note is that we looked at it to see if we could keep anywhere near ten percent or eleven percent for some amount of the years to follow our debt policy. And as you can see, you know, it, it's the way this is structured, and we can't structure it that much different because of, we need the cash. You're at thirteen, fourteen, thirteen, twelve percent. So you're significantly above ten percent for numerous years, which, again, is just not what our debt policy states we should be doing, and the bonding agencies do have concern about that. So regardless of the, the tax impact, that's the other thing.
And this is with a two percent, the line that says projected budget, you've just gone, you've assumed a two percent budget across?
Right, I, yeah, I just, I just went two percent, it's obviously not, not realistic. What I wanted to do was, I had to somewhat negate the impact of the debt service increases or decreases over the years, so I just did an average two percent.
Yeah, okay. I just wanna know where I'm, where I'm doing. Okay.
So that's, I mean, that's the impact, and, and as Kathy indicated, when you get out to the later years, is when you really start to get your relief. You know, and we've all along projected that, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two years were the years, would be the, the years when debt drops off and, and the opportunity exists to add more debt on. But, this was back to the other question, this is how we envisioned the debt would, would flow on to the project, based on the construction schedule that, that we've been told, and, and based on, you know, the flow of, of the cash flow needs, that we would estimate it, so.
But that's six years above the ten percent increase. I mean, I mean, more, even if it's ten percent.
You would have, yeah.
More than ten percent.
Well, no, there's, there's, yeah.
Joe, I'm.
You know, the, the problem, I'm sorry, the, the problem with shooting for a goal like, holding at ten percent is that, obviously, as you add all this debt on, your budget's gonna increase more than two percent. Because your budget's gonna increase more than two percent, that ten percent of debt service number, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna get closer to that ten percent of debt service number, you may even go over, under it, because, you know, I, I, I could appreciate Moody's or, or other rating agencies saying a ten percent, we'd like to see you at ten percent, or that's, they don't even say we'd like to see, that's the metric, okay? Moody's runs their ratings based on metrics. They look at you, they look at their, their, their stable of towns, and what their stable of towns does, and they, they run a formula and says, basically, based on these variables, you should be a double-A one. Based on these variables, you should be a triple-A one. Based on these, and, and they have rating factors, and ten, ten percent of, of, of your, that service as a percent of your operating budget is one of their metrics, don't get me wrong. But it's also kind of a, it's kind of like a moving target metric, because if, if I could take this and factor in the, the debt into that number, you're gonna be under ten percent in that thirteen-point-seven year, because.
Wait a minute.
It's, what you're saying is that.
Into the thirteen percent year?
Joe is only putting in a two percent budget increase.
Right.
Right, the budget's bigger.
But the budget.
Right, the bigger you make your budget.
The percentage is lower.
Fund balance has to be bigger.
Yeah, well, the fund balance has to be bigger, and that, this.
The fund balance, we're gonna, you put more money into the fund balance.
Joe, Joe, if I could, if I wanna take a look at the, the projected budget line. Column one, it's a hundred and two thousand dollars, that's what we're about to put in place.
That's what was approved at referendum two weeks ago, right?
That includes the six million dollars in debt service.
Right.
So when I increase that by two years.
Two percent?
Uh, two percent. It's also part, somehow, it seems like we're double counting that money.
No, what I used it was to help inflate the number, because what I should've really done was taken it out.
Right.
And, and then, then the, the two percent, but I didn't want, I wanted to capture the debt service, and I wanted to capture the debt service in the base, and then build on that base. And that's why I say, I don't think, I don't think shooting for a target of ten percent in, in developing this is really a, a useful tool. Because again, you know, I'm gonna add, if I add the total debt ser, if I add the total debt service increase to nineteen twenty, and that, that budget now is, that now becomes over a hundred and thirteen million dollar budget, well.
Hundred, hundred and twenty, right? Fourteen plus a hundred and six.
If I took, well, if I took, say, took a hundred and six, well, I actually have to do the difference, so it'd probably be, it'd be six million dollars, this thing increase. So, if I added six-point-six million dollars to the one-hundred-and-six-point-nine million dollars, you know, that's gonna drive that total debt service number as a part, percent of operating budget.
Yes, you're gonna have a one.
So let's say that's three percent instead of two percent, is that what you're saying?
No, he's saying, let's put the actual number.
I do this, uh, let's see, let's, let's say seven millions, that's, let's do this. So I just increased your budget.
Right.
Okay.
And you subtracted.
And I brought down the thirteen-point-seven to twelve-point-eight. So if I increase this to.
Yeah, it's.
You know what I mean, it's.
It's playing. Joe, quick question. If we were to consider a thirty-year loan opposed to twenty-year loan, how, and again, I hear what you're saying, don't make ten percent your goal, because we're playing, there's a little, a lot of fiction going on, like, you're trying to get it, but there's, we don't know what the future will bring. But if you change it to twenty, and go to thirty, how would it impact us?
We actually looked at that, and it does it very little, it's like a half, it's a, a half of one percent.
That's really trying to help the homeowner a hundred dollars here, and that, the impact really is the homeowner or not?
Yeah, to, to impact, to, to keep this at, this is, to stay under ten percent every year consistently, based on this scenario, with a two percent growth in your, in your budget, you literally would, would have to cut fifty million dollars out of this project. So you.
So we'd have to be at a hundred, seventy-five?
You would have to be at seventy-five million dollars. You'd have to be at between seventy-five and eighty million dollars, and, and that assumes that you would get the state reimbursement in nineteen percent.
Joe, did you do one chart, and it's, it's not meant to be a scare tactic, it's meant to show reality, that, do you have a tax and budget sheet of this existing year, and that we throw in a debt payment into that, so you can see what, if you put a debt payment of that magnitude into the existing budget that we just had?
Yeah, I can do that.
I think that's what you're asking for.
Just so you.
Meredith, I have a question for you, can I ask her a question?
I don't know if I have.
No, 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 what I, I, you're at the meetings, we're not. The likelihood of the nineteen percent, so much of what we're doing is to get that nineteen percent, and then we talk at length about what's going on in the state. Do we have any sense of likelihood?
I mean, do you wanna answer that?
I, I talked to our consultants today, and what every indication has been, they've met with the school state, school people, the state people, they are very happy with our project, and they, the nineteen percent. They feel that in a typical type of year, we would be getting the nineteen percent. It's not that end of it, it's the bigger state issue, and the bigger state issue is, no one knows, because they have to bond that money to give this money out, and that's, you know, I asked that direct question, and unfortunately, no one knows the answer because of the state situation, and because it's a year out, and because you're going to be bonding it. If, if, if it was last year at this time, you, I would say, we are absolutely, we're told that we were a perfect candidate, we've done everything we're supposed to, we followed all the rules for it, and nineteen percent was our number. That's what we've been told.
Not to be cynical, but we've been pretty good candidates for a lot of things, involved, and it hasn't. I'm just saying, like, I just, we're doing so much for this nineteen.
Oh, I know.
If a year from now, you know, I'm, I just, I would love some probability, but it doesn't, I mean, but it doesn't sound like there.
Well, our timing, and that, that's where the timing comes in. I mean, what I don't want people to think is that there's some arbitrary thing going on here with the timing of this.
Oh, no, no, I'm just.
Timing is a hundred percent, and I think it's good for people to know, a hundred percent to maximize our state reimbursement, because it's never going to be this good again.
Right.
For us, and so that's why this is unfortunately, you're hitting on top of the sewer. I think, and, and that's where, and I don't even know how to formulate this question, but essentially, we're trying to capture, well, we're just trying to maximize state reimbursement.
And we have interest rates that are going up, and we have building costs that are going up.
It is what it is. If we were to wait on this, because we have a sewer project, we would be paying significantly more, and the impact of the homeowners would be significantly more. So it's, it's not, it's kind of a rock and a hard place.
Right, but it's also, I mean, Joe, interest rates, if we waited three years from now, our guess is, no, I'm, they're going, I mean, interest rates, building costs, everything else.
Yeah. Interest rates is very day-to-day these days, the, the trend is generally up, but I was looking at issues, and somebody sold a double-A, double-A one, sold twenty years, bank-qualified for two-six, two-point-six percent, and a triple-A sold non-bank-qualified for over three, and that's within the past three weeks. So, you know, unfortunately, it depends on the, the day, right now, the trend is upwards, obviously. Just think about a year ago, we sold at a two, two-point-one-four percent, you know, and now they're getting two-point-six and threes. So they, they are going up, where they stop, it's hard to say at this point.
I mean, I, I guess if work, we conclude that, and again, if Kathy Greeter were here, or someone could explain the importance of the school generally, and how it's gonna have an impact if we don't take care of it in the next couple of years. If the money from the state is likely to disappear, the interest rates are likely to go up, and building costs always go up. I mean, Glastonbury, I was, I think, no, Weathersfield, I was just at their high school, they just renovated it, did a spectacular job. They did it for eighty-nine million. The only difference, and it's not radically different than what we're intending to do, the only difference is years, prices go up, not down, so. You know, I think the question, one of the questions is, are we going to do this, and if so, when is the smartest time financially to do it?
I could tell you, I worked in Weathersfield, and the first year I was in Weathersfield, we closed out a high school renovation project. We had renovated the high school for about seven million dollars. When I left Weathersfield, we were renovating, thirteen years later, we were renovating the high school for twenty million dollars. And thirteen years after that, they were renovating the high school for eighty-nine million dollars. I'm not sure if there's a lesson in there, other than the fact you're, you're just always renovating the high school in Weathersfield.
Uh, Joe, I'm having a problem with the projected budget number.
Okay. Okay.
And the rea-, the reason is, is that if the total debt service is going up, and I'm just looking at eighteen nineteen compared to nineteen twenty, so if the debt service is going up by six million dollars, more than six million dollars, and the projected budget you have out here going up two million dollars, that means the rest of the budget has to be going down.
Exactly.
And, so, what you really have to do is take the non-debt service piece of the budget, and increase that by two percent, and that end, add in the debt service, and then calculate these percentages, because this, this makes the percentages larger than they should be.
No, I know, it's the same-
I think you're saying the same thing that we said, it's, it's not really a fair analysis, because your budget is gonna go up more than two percent, because your debts, realistically, your debt service is going up, you, six percent, so, I mean, six million dollars, so that's six-
Which will bring you-
But, but, so you, yeah, what I was trying to do is, is, is capture, I, I, I was cheating a little bit. What I wanted to do is, in that first year, I wanted to capture that debt service to keep the, the base bigger, because two percent and a hundred and two million dollars is, is a lot better than two percent and ninety-five million dollars. And if I took, so if I took that debt, I mean, if, if I took the debt out of the seventeen, eighteen budget, and I'm going down to nine, oh, ninety-six million dollars, two percent on ninety-six million dollars, it's not gonna be two million dollars, it's gonna be less than that. So I kept the debt service in there in order to capture that, to increase that base up a little bit, and factor it in. Again, I'm just, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, what I, you know, what you're, what you're looking at really, realistically, is every one of these years, is you're going to take this hundred, this hundred and four, eight oh, eight, hundred and four, eight, and you're gonna add the increase in debt service to it, and then you're gonna, and, you know, you're gonna take your two percent, or five percent, or whatever you do for the operating budget, and then you're gonna add your increase in debt service to it, and that's gonna be your budget.
Right, so, so instead of the hundred and six, hundred and six, nine, point nine, it's gonna be more like a hundred and ten.
Right.
Right.
And that's gonna make this thirteen percent more like ten percent.
Right. I think we just said it would probably make it twelve point eight percent. Look at, right, if you look on the screen, I added in a hundred and fourteen million dollars, I changed it and said, including debt service, your budget's a hundred and fourteen-
I didn't see the change.
Yeah.
You just did it.
So if you look and say, now it's a hundred and fourteen million dollars, debt service as a percent of your operating budget is twelve point eight million dollars. Again, it takes, it takes a lot to bring that percentage down, you know, or it takes a lot to, to increase your budget to bring that percentage down, or it takes a lot to reduce your budget to bring that percentage down.
But, Joe, I think also, and then just we'll show the other chart, I think it's a snapshot, John, of two things. One is that, again, are we realistically going to have our budgets go up eight or nine percent, but that's not realistic, that we're actually only gonna have our budget go up two percent. So, the number is somewhere in between that.
Right, and, and, and the point again is, you're, Kathy says, you're, you're not gonna do that, because if, again, if you look at nineteen, you know, the budget increase is, is nine million dollars, and the debt increase is, is six and a half million dollars, so, I, I'm sorry, that's, that's, I think that's backwards. You have a deficit, that year, you actually, in order to stay within a two percent budget increase, you have to reduce your, your overall budget by two point six million dollars. I mean, you're not gonna do that, obviously.
Right.
Just, Joe, show the one tax sheet, just so we can just kind of see that with the debt, and then, just so people-
So this is your adopted budget this year in this, in this column here. Board got sixty-four, the town got twenty-eight, forget the teacher's retirement, that's a whole other issue. That's your debt service that we adopted this year, the capital improvements, and that's our total budget for this current year. What if we took and left everything the same, added in the debt service for, in this case, for nineteen twenty, which is the fourteen point six million dollar debt service that we'd have in nineteen twenty, you know, grand list stayed the same, revenue stayed the same, right? Our budget went up, our tax rate went to twenty-six point six eight mils, went up point nine this year. With that debt service increase, everything else being the same, the tax rate would be twenty-eight point seven two mils, two point, two mil increase, on top of, on top of that, seven point six five percent, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-one cents, that's the impact on top of what you did this year. So if we had actually put that number in this year instead of two years from now, you'd basically would be four seventy-three plus two oh nine, so you'd be at a, over a ten percent tax increase.
It's a little more than seventeen.
Joe, where does that twenty-eight, that mil rate of twenty-eight point seven two, where, where does that fall with, do you know, comparatively with, with our surrounding towns? Where, where are they? I feel like I don't have a-
Still low.
Still low.
Where is everybody else now?
We're actually, I think we're even below, we'd still be below Avon, I think we still-
No, I don't think you're below, I don't think you're below Avon any longer. You're still low, but you're, um-
You're below Simsbury, above Avon.
Well, Simsbury, Glastonbury, West Harp, we're still way-
You're below Simsbury, you're above Avon, basically.
I would say, in general, that's still a very low mil rate.
No, compared to the, I mean, that's-
Compared to ours, yes. I think that's very fair to say.
So, so that seven point six five, let me see if I am understanding right now, is taking on, is, is including two percent of an increase for our regular budget, Kathy, the, the, the school and the town, and include, but it includes the debt, the debt that we're gonna take on as well.
That would be-
Those are two separate.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't include the two percent.
Okay, that does, okay, so, no, we see-
That includes, yes, that includes the debt that you were gonna take on.
Right, yeah.
And, um-
Oh, but the others are the same, right. Wait, wait, wait.
But everything else stays the same.
What we did-
This is no, no taxing, this is no change in any of the budget, right? This is your budget, your adopted budget for this year, and the only thing we did was change it to adding fourteen million dollars.
Okay, but what is that with teachers' retirement?
Oh, ignore that, I'm sorry, this is, I'm using, I'm using a model.
All right, I was trying to figure out-
I'm using, I'm using a model from a question you asked me several weeks ago.
Okay, that's fine. So, so just so I'm clear, 'cause I'm getting confused, so the educa- so you're, everything's the same, except that's taking on our debt service.
Right. Increasing your debt service by seven point three million dollars.
Oh, okay, now I understand where the tens come from. So, that's no increase in anything except our debt service. No increase in our budgets, meaning Kathy or Kathy.
What we did is that, the left chart, the left side right here, that's the budget we're, what you guys just approached.
That's a zero percent increase.
No, to the left.
This, this-
That's what, that's the budget we just adopted.
It's our adopted budget.
Now, you go down to the end, the tax increase is three point five percent.
Right.
That's, so it's not two percent, it's three point five percent, okay?
Oh, 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 okay, I'm sorry.
Then, no, that's okay. Then you go to the chart that Joe just showed, and then we said, let's first say we took on fourteen million dollars worth of debt, which is in a couple of years, just so you get an idea. So all we did was add in the fourteen million dollars, now you go down the chart, now it's a seven point six five percent increase plus a three point five percent increase. So now it's a two hundred and nine dollar fifty-seven, that's what the average taxpayer would pay, plus four hundred and seventy-three.
Oh, so that's where you get the ten, eleven percent.
Yeah, yeah, so it's three point five.
So it's actually eleven percent.
Yeah.
Which is a more realistic, at least it's a realistic assessment.
What year were we at, nineteen mils? Oh, boy.
That's on the chart, one of the charts we had, I didn't bring that one up.
I think that was, um, that was after, that was after a REVA, I think that was after the two thousand seven REVA, two thousand-
So it was within the last ten years, we were at nineteen mils.
Yeah, I think we were like nine, were we nineteen seven, I think it was?
I remember twenty-one. I thought that was like the lowest. I, we can get that.
I don't know if I have that chart. I'd have to get that, I'd-
Here, I have it.
All right.
So have you played with this formula potentially with all types of pension contributions?
Two thousand and eight.
Why? Why would you ask?
Gotta say, it's sitting right there.
Right.
So two thousand and eight, we're at nineteen mils, nineteen point four.
Two thousand and eight, after the revale, we went from twenty-five point nine five to nineteen point four seven.
Yeah.
And that was in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine.
That's when the market-
But that was the last big grand list growth year.
What was, what was the number that you had just put up? What's the mil rate down here, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight point seven two.
And so, the highest we've, we've had, we've had twenty-six point five and twenty-six point six eight, so we have, so.
All right, thank you.
And, just, just to be, you throw out the pension, Peter, just to throw it all in there. This is truly, I mean, no increase in our budget, I mean, I mean, if we continue on upcoming years, but it, it also means no, we did a, a study a couple of years ago with all the, all the schools, and what the needs are gonna be in the next ten years, let's say. That's nothing to do, no money set aside or put into the, the school, the other schools, that's no money put into the, the fire.
Right.
Not, not even trucks, but the, the buildings themselves that we talk about, we're gonna be looking at a couple million dollar renovations. It's, it's no money with anything upcoming that we don't, we can't foresee right now.
No. Basically, that's the scenario right here, just freezes your budget where it is right now. So your capital budget would be at the same level, at the two point four million dollars that you, you adopted this year. Doesn't build in any additional debt being issued. And you can authorize all the debt you want, I just cannot issue any, probably cannot issue any debt.
But, the one thing, to be fair, I think that, again, is that it's not cumulative, that you've built the base up. So if, we, we did it at fourteen, the highest here is fifteen, so it would be another million dollars. So, again, you'd, you'd have a tax increase similar to this at ten percent, whether you would do a ten percent, whether you, but that would be the maximum. Then your base is up there, you're not growing, you're not putting another fourteen million in, you know, you're only putting in. So you've built the base.
Right, exactly. Once, I mean-
Once you've done that-
Then why isn't it that for one year?
I'm sorry?
But it would be. So you, so you put in fourteen, then your debt service the next year would only go up only a million dollars. So your taxes are still gonna go up, but they're not gonna go up ten percent, because you only went up a million dollars instead of fourteen million dollars.
So this should come down, shouldn't it? Because this number, you're gonna-
No, because that's still your debt service. It's still the debt on the percentage, yeah.
I mean, you, yeah, obviously, you, the more debt you issue, the, your debt service goes up. When you stop issuing, your debt service starts to go down. So, and, and again, looking at this chart, when you look at debt service numbers, here you're still issuing debt, I mean, you have, you have a, you're picking up a full year of, of the issue number two, so this number goes up here. Here, you're gonna go down, because you're gonna pick up significant savings in old debt, you're gonna pick up some savings in, in the debt from twenty seventeen, and even though, so you, even though you're issuing the third issue, it's not gonna be an, an increase in debt service, you actually have a slight decrease. And then in twenty twenty-two, you have a substantial decrease in old debt, which, again, as that new debt hits, it's, you know, you're still gonna have a decrease in debt service. Again, assuming, at this point, you're done issuing debt for these projects, so this, that, that number should steadily go down in future, you know, future years incrementally.
So Kathy, are you saying that really there's one year of dramatic impact? I mean, in terms of what we're used to seeing in Farmington, which is-
I think you're gonna see one, one year where you're really going to see a, a substantial gain.
There's gonna be one dramatic moment, because this is an expensive undertaking. I mean, this is an expensive-
Yeah. Yeah, I think you, you, how this is spread out, like you're going from eight million to fourteen million, and so that's a dramatic thing, but then from fourteen to fifteen, isn't as much-
But you're still carrying that one dramatic throughout the twenty years, and then just adding less dramatic to it.
Right.
Right, but I'm just saying, yeah.
It's not one dramatic thing, it's twenty dramatics, and then it's nineteen less dramatics.
Well, I think dramatic is subjective, after a certain point.
Of course, you get used, people used to something, and then, yeah.
Yeah, you've, you've-
I mean, on the other side of it, the, the, the positive would be that you're, you're not gonna be able, that, the, interest rates we would expect at this point are gonna continue to rise. So doing it now and locking something in, is it possible to be locked in if we do it now, as opposed to, or is it, as you do the bonding, that's when, that's when the, so, three years from now, if the interest rate's up, that's what you get.
That's why you'd like to do seventy mil, you know, you'd like to do seventy million right outside.
If you knew, if you knew rates were going up, and you, and you thought you could spend fifty percent of the, the proceeds, you know, issue half the, the debt now, and lock, and you'd lock in that rate, but you can't, I mean, there's, there's, I mean, there's IRS arbitrage considerations you have to take into consideration, that they have a lot of rules, spending rules, you have to spend so much at certain time periods, otherwise you run into arbitrage, and they don't like arbitrage. So you can't issue it all at once. Prior to nineteen eighty-six, you used to issue it, I mean, it was the old, you know, the old days, you would issue fifty million dollars, invest it, you would, you would borrow fifty million dollars at, at, at a nine percent, and then you would invest it at twenty percent.
Oh, right.
And, you know, next thing you know, you, you got millions of dollars in interest earnings, and the IRS said in nineteen eighty-six, you can't do this anymore. So they, they put in rules and regulations, so you can't do that now. So we would basically issue based, again, based on the construction schedule, and, and how we, the contractor, whoever's overseeing, the con, the construction manager's gonna say, here's what the construction schedule's gonna be, and based on that, we're gonna estimate how much money we're gonna need, and then we're gonna either issue bands or bonds, depending upon the market, so we have sufficient cash to pay, pay the contractors as, as everything comes due. And, and you're not talking, you know, it's not, it's on a hundred million dollar, or a hundred and thirty-five million dollar project, you're, you're talking about four, five million dollar payments at a, at a time. I mean, we're paying, we're paying on average, two million dollars right now to the contractor on the water pollution upgrade project, and that's a fifty-seven million dollar project. So it's two million dollars a month to him, so, figure, if he's getting fifty-seven million, on, on fifty-seven, he's getting two million dollars a month on a hundred and thirty-five million dollar project, you know, you're gonna get at least double that.
So, I mean, one reason to do it now, or a couple reasons, would be, hopefully the interest rates would be lower now than five years from now, so that it, it wouldn't, I mean, we'd start at least at a lower level than is starting three years from now, except the years that we'd start, we're better off, you know, starting, because that's, that's our, our, our open window, so to speak. And, and secondly, I mean, the financing would be some, but the cost may be going up. I mean, the cost now of what the building would cost as opposed to two years from now, may be, you know, more.
Particularly with the loss of state funding.
Well, no, I meant-
There's building costs.
I meant building costs. Like, if the materials cost, you know, right now, if, if interest rates are great, building is going, isn't it a trend generally, that the costs then would go up for building it, for building it? So that if we lock in what the wood costs now, what the steel costs now, that probably would be less now than three years from now.
Yeah, I'm not really, I'm not really sure how, I know people say that, but most contracts, as was mentioned before, you have a ten million dollar contingency. Most of those contingencies aren't for what they find wrong with the project, it's for the cost increase that come along during the project. You, you know, you could lock in, you could lock in the contractor, you could lock in his wages. If his materials go up, if the materials go up during the course of the project, you're gonna start negotiating, you know, you're gonna start negotiating, you know, a small increase, he's probably gonna eat, a big increase, he's not gonna eat, and he's gonna come back to you, and that's where your, most of your contingency comes in. But, but again, a lot of those things are out of your control. I mean, you know, we, we bid projects thinking they're gonna be three million dollars, and they come in at one million dollars, you know. You have a bid on tonight for sidewalks, we thought it'd be, we thought the cost would be four hundred thousand, it came in at two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. You know, if, if President Trump's infrastructure program goes in, ever gets approved, you know, you probably, your, your cost, you're right, your, your cost will probably go through the ceiling, because everybody's gonna be doing infrastructure work, you know, billions of dollars of infrastructure work, nobody's gonna wanna do a hundred million dollar, or, very few people are gonna wanna do a hundred million dollar high school project. So, there's a lot of variables you can't really control on this.
But, I mean, again, I think just in summary, I mean, the, the bottom line is, is I think there's pros and cons, there's, there's a need.
Right.
And that has to, I think everyone, the statement of needs has to be addressed, but I think you have the interest rates going up, you have, I think what Amy, you said, and I agree, is that I think the chances of your state grant are more so now than later, than later. So I think the cha, but, so there's, the interest rates are going up, the chances of your grant are more so probably now than later. You would think your building costs are probably going to be more expensive now versus later. On the Um, on the flip side, again, the timing is not ideal, we're going to have to bond at the same time and authorize money that we have a sewer project going on, we're going to have a large increase in taxes. Um, we may not get the grant, and we have to weigh that into our decision. And lastly, we have to think about that, that we have a, a credit rating that basically says that taking on this type of debt, is there's a potential that we could be downgraded from our Moody's rating? And that's something that I think we're all very proud of and worked hard to get, and so, these, but, these are the things that I think you need full information about to be able to make your decision.
And this chart is based on 110 million, correct? Not 135?
No, this is 135.
I'm sorry?
This is 135.
Oh, okay, I thought you said 110.
No, the first, the first chart that you've been working off, this one here, is 110 million.
Oh, you switched the tab, oh, you just did it right now, Nancy, you just changed it.
So, we went from 110 to 135.
You didn't see, just switch it.
Yeah, if you want to see 135, this is 135.
Yeah, the one that you were working on, talking to us about, was 110.
110, right.
Right, right, okay, that's all, did we, do we have one for 135 also?
I didn't, I don't have a handout, but I do have it on the screen here.
You're switching back and forth.
Yeah.
Okay, I-
Going crazy here, sorry.
But the one we were discussing with the 3.5 and the 7, were one, it was 110.
That's 110.
So, if we don't get the funding and it's 1.35, go to the bottom of this one.
This is the 1.35, again, you know, 14 million dollars, 50 million dollars, instead of 35 for issue two, you do, you do 50 million dollars, and then issue three, actually, this should be 21 million, I apologize, that's, that's 21 million dollars, not, not 11. So, this, I mean, these are the impacts that you would have.
It's about the same.
Joe, what if, I mean, this is-
So, 1920 at 14.8, where, where the difference is, is 2021, you're at 17 million, you're at 16 million dollars in 20, right? In 1920, on, on the 110, you're at 14.6 million, you're at 14.8, but in 2021, you're at 17 million dollars instead of 15.6. So, what happens is, the higher amount, you push it out further, you, it would impact the later years more so. So, it's, you know, you'd be here, you're at 17 million instead of being at, um, 15 million. In 21, 22, you're at 17 million instead of being at 15 million, so you're adding 2 million dollars in those later years.
Joe, what if you, and if the year that that 10% could hit, you just decide to do freezing of all capital expenditures? I mean, not, sort of basically, that is the year that no fire trucks, no roads, no anything, we just freeze it for a year. Um, just so we can, to take the, the pain away, what would the, what would the tax increase likely look like? If we just take that, whatever our typical, our cash capital improvements?
So, so if you take that number out-
You just remove it? If we just make that our one year that-
So now you're at 20.05, you're at a 5% instead of a 7%.
Okay.
So, you're, now you're at eight.
So, you're at eight.
You're at eight, you're at 8.6 instead of 10.
And that's still a three, that's a 3.5% increase in our budget?
Yeah, plus five.
Okay, so-
So potentially, if you just take one year, you take one year of capital improvements, you push everything one year over, and you just do one clean year, you know, it, it makes it easier to-
It's an 8.6% increase.
If you're at 3.5, if we're only at 3.5 this year, it's because of the state, realistically, we're at a 2 and change.
Well, but being clean, well, but being clean, Amy, I'm going to follow up on that, if we cut a percent off of our budget-
But that's what I'm saying, you and I are on the same plane right now, yeah, we're in the same place.
Everybody has to feel the pain.
No, absolutely, but what I'm saying is 10% makes everyone on, on this council cringe, and it makes, the reason it makes me cringe is I will not be here, so I'm going to have another council who is panicked with a 10%, and they're going to cut in pretty harsh, and we're going to hurt our town. But if we just say that, if that one year, we just say there's just no capital improvements, and we do that flat, and we get it 7%, it's, it's an easier, it's an easier pill to take, so that, that's just why, I mean, again, this is going to be an analysis for someone else, really, really.
And this is for, you know-
This is way down the road, but at least-
But that's 14 million.
What year is that?
Right.
You're talking about next year, Amy?
7%.
No, 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 I'm talking, I'm, you know, year, I'm talking, 2021.
She's in 20 already.
1920.
Yeah, so what I'm doing is, in 20, if the council in, you know, 20 decides, capital, we're just doing nothing with respect to capital improvements, and we're going to do a lean year, then we can get it at 7. I think a 7, explaining to the public why we're at 7, is a much easier-
You mean as opposed to a 10?
Yeah, and I, I, yeah, I just, I'm, it's not even explained to the public, but look, they're going to, people are going to get a bump, but there's a difference between a 7 and a 10. If we conclude that this community genuinely needs the high school, then, I mean, we can't, we can't speak for council three years down the road, but that, you're going to have to look at something like that, because that doesn't necessarily go into the, the bone.
Right, and this is, I mean, again-
It's just, but it's going to be that kind of big decision.
Right, and history repeats itself, this is, that's exactly what we did when we took on the Westwood School, is that we, for the big bump, we cut all the capital out of the budget, we downgrade the operating budgets to one very low, to, to build the base up, but unfortunately, again, and this is what, it's a, it's a sacrifice, is that then that, that capital budget's no longer there. So now you start, and if you look at our capital budget history, we have to start building that budget up, and so, but that's, that's what you do.
There's going to be trade-offs.
Right, that's what you do.
My, you know, the, the other fear is that 10% could make people cringe, no, 10 people-
Getting hot with all of us here.
It's a sign, Joe, we're ready to move on.
We're done, Joe.
7% for the record still makes me cringe, it's still, it's still double 3.5, which is a number that makes me cringe.
But they have options.
Right now, we're brainstorming.
Amy's saying that council has options.
Um, the other reality is that if, if the budget is voted down in, in 2021, um, we basically are forced to go back to where we were the year before, and that would be a 7% versus a 10% difference. Again, John, we're, we're brainstorming, because we have dilemmas galore, and we have needs galore, and we're working together as a team to see if we can find a solution.
Absolutely.
Um, I don't want to talk about this, but if you want to, uh, I'll talk about it.
No, it's 9:15, way past our bedtime.
No, I don't want to talk about it.
This is just a handout that, that shows you what the three, what, what a AAA is in Connecticut, and where we rank as a AAA in Connecticut. And if you have a question about, you could call me or whatever, or ask Kathy, but, um-
Read it at your leisure.
Yeah. Just to give you an idea of what a AAA looks like in Connecticut.
Well, I wanted to know how the AAA is affected, what, how, what does it mean if we, by having the AAA, for instance, with the-
Uh, and I did have that.
With the, um, what do you call it, the, the, um, sewer, what does that mean if we, if we weren't, didn't have the AAA, what's, what does it mean?
Um, and actually, I apologize, my battery died, but, um, basically, having the AAA since 2015, since, between the notes and the bonds that we issued since 2015, the difference between being a AA1 and being a AAA resulted in about $572,000 in interest savings to the town. So, that, and we issued a lot of debt in that time period, but that's basically, the cumulative effect is about $572,000 in interest savings for the past three years. Um, and just to give you an idea, the last, um, we, we did 42 million dollars in bands a couple weeks ago, we closed on it today. On that alone, we saved about $79,000.
So, I'm sorry, what was your figure again, it was 500 over three years?
Uh, since 2015, we've saved $572,000 in interest costs between being, because we're AAA as opposed to a AA.
My calculation is, okay, nevermind.
Are there any other ways that that effect, being, having a AAA affects us, is it just, is it, not just, I don't want to say that way, it's percentages of interest, I mean, it's how we, how much we can get when we, is there any?
There's two things that happen with, with your rating and, um, and where you are with your, with your rating. One is obviously the interest, the interest cost difference, you know, you, we got a, the, on the 42 million dollars in notes, we got a 1%, okay? Somebody else sold notes at the same time, they were AA, AA3, they got a 1.23, okay? So, there's almost a quarter percent difference in, in the doll, in the, in the interest rate. The second thing is access to the markets, we got 30 some odd bids on our notes, okay? They got two. So, we, we actually had people bid, we had, um, we did a competitive bid, an open bid, and we had enough people, enough interest that we received 33, it was 33 or 32 actual bids on our, on, on ours, they got, they had two. They got a 1.12, they got a 1.23 and a 1.68 or something like that. So, we got everything ranged, ours started at, our bidding started at a 1.25 and went down to a 1. So, um, so there is, there is a difference in having it, and, and the big part is the access, in, in my mind, the, the interest rate's nice, but the, my part is always the access to the market, you're always worried that you don't get, you know, you don't have market attraction. So, AAA obviously attracts the markets, so-
Well, and that's one of the things when we were talking today with the bond people, is that Connecticut's not getting anyone because of their bond rating and their situation, and that filters down to us. And that's why, again, having a, a larger, a higher bond rating helps you in, in this type of environment, too.
Do you think legislators are aware of the deep impact of, of that on municipalities who are trying to spend money and trying to do the right thing, and, and yet we're hampered by things that are completely out of our control? And, and in their hands, I mean, do you think they're aware of how?
I don't know.
I don't think they care.
I don't know.
It's frustrating.
It doesn't seem like the overall picture is being thought about.
Yeah.
It's more the little pieces of the pie. When, when if the big pie is affected as much as we think it might be, it's going to affect us dramatically, all of us dramatically, all the small towns, much more dramatically than, than I think they're, you know, they're really aware, they're both, both hurt. I mean, there, there are a lot of things to, oh, just the last thing about our fund balance and, and where that is, and if we, how is that affected as we go along? Just, I, I don't need a chart or anything, but just, to just-
In that handout?
Yeah.
There's a, there's actually a chart that shows you the percentages of the AAA towns.
Oh, that's where the fund balance happens.
One of the last ones, oh, fund balance, second, second from the back, Joe?
Yeah.
Fund balance-
Yeah, there's, there's two of them. The, uh, second from the left, just fund balances percent of operating revenues. These are 2015 numbers, um, so, they're fiscal year around 2015, so they're, they are two years old, or, or one and a half years old, but, um, we're at, at a 10.8, um, and we're pretty much still there at, at this point, we're still at a like a 10.8, a little, um, rounded up, we're close to 11% fund balance. But if you look at, again, these are AAA towns, we're, um, third from the bottom for overall fund balance. And if you look at the last page, this, this to me personally is the more, um, important. When they, when they talk about fund balance, fund balance has many components, and some point, some components of fund balance are not touchable, they're, they're, they're not realistic, they're not real. This last page is the un, what we call the unreserved, unassigned fund balance, it's the true free money. If you needed to spend, you could actually, this is what you would actually appropriate, what you would actually use.
So, we're much better on that.
And we're slightly better, we're, we're actually lower, we're, instead of being 10.8, we're 10.4, but our ranking is better, we pick up a couple of spots.
And closer to the average.
Yeah, in the average, yeah.
Yeah, we're close, yeah, the average would be 11.7, but, but if you look at those towns up, you know, up above there, the 16 and a half to 15.9, um, you know, to give you an idea of when you could have really good, uh, you could have a lot of debt, if you go to the second, I think it's the second page. Go to the, if you go to the second page, um, debt per capita, New Canaan has $6,000 debt per capita, so in other words, they have, their outstanding debt is, is, um, $6,000 for every person that lives in the town.
What are they doing?
So, I don't know what they're doing, and I don't know what they're doing there, now they're a AAA town. And then you look at their unreserved, undesignated fund balance, and it's 16%.
They're borrowing money, put it in their unpaid balance?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, they must be, they must be leveraging this money somehow. But they apparently have a very good grant list, too, because their debt versus their grant list is low. Their, their debt versus their grant list is the same as ours, so their, their grant list actually is probably very good. So, so, we're, we're probably, again, depending upon what the state does with that half a million dollar grant, if they pay it to us, we're going to probably add to fund balance this year, we'll probably go over the 11% number. If they don't give us the $500,000, we'll probably have a fund balance pretty much, next year, it's pretty much in the same, actually, we'll lose ground because our, our budget went up 2%, so we will lose some ground, um, if we don't get the grant, so. So, again, every time you increase your bottom, your budget, you, you basically want, in, in order to keep pace with your fund balance, you have to increase your fund balance by, by some amount, so, if our budget goes up 2 million dollars, we have to add, you know, $200,000 to fund balance.
Interesting, see what other? And that's part of what Moody's considers when they consider our rating, is what our fund, you know, that we have a good fund balance, too.
Yeah, yeah, again-
I mean, it's good for us to maintain that, not use it right now.
Yes, uh, you have, Moody's, uh, again, looking at the credit report, Moody's is, was very, very, um, pleased, or, or they're, they made a lot of comments of the fact that we have not touched fund balance in several years, and that we're, even though we're not growing it significantly, we are growing it, and we are, we're not touching it, and that's, to them is a very, is a, is a real positive. And, um, and again, I think they sometimes overweight fund balance because of, I mean, ever decide to go through those reports. Now, just look at Wallingford, um, Wallingford is low in every criteria except for they don't have any debt, and they have a humongous fund balance, and they're a AAA. I mean, by, by all metrics, they, Wallingford should not be a AAA. Wallingford's a AAA because their fund balance is like 20%, and they have like $600 per capita in debt, so-
That's part of the money.
Yeah, so, so, it's, um, it's interesting with, and again, you know, when you look at Moody's, they base everything on metrics. And so, whatever stands out in the metrics, where we stand out is we have a very strong grant list, we have a very high grant list. We do have average or normal debt per capita, we are low per capita income, um, for, for towns, if you look, I think we're third from the bottom. But again, our debt, they, they're comfortable with our debt levels and, and our grant list, and because of that, you know, we're AAA.
Okay, thank you. I would say, you know, if you have any other questions or concerns to, or you want some more information about anything, you know, to let us know. So, just a lot to digest, but, anyway, okay.
Do you want to motion to it, was that all the town manager's report?
Yes, I think that was enough.
Yeah.
I move to approve the report of the town manager.
Second.
Any questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, appointments.
I have L1, I move that Greg Hall be appointed to the Plainville area Cable TV Advisory Council for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Any questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
L5, I move that Ted Sanford be appointed as an alternate to the Farmington Historic District Commission for the balance of a three-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2019.
Second.
Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Okay, last one is L6, I move that Cynthia Mason be appointed to the Housing Authority for the balance of a five-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2000, or 2021.
Second.
Any questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, uh, old business, non-new business, N1.
I move that a property tax rate of 26.68 mils be levied on the next taxable grant list of October 1st, 2016 in the amount of $3,595,959,571 to meet the appropriations of the town of Farmington for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 through July 30th, 2018, and that such taxes shall be payable in equal installments on July 1st, 2017 and January 1st, 2018, except that property taxes as defined in Section 12-141 of the Connecticut General Statutes in an amount not in excess of $100 shall be due and payable in a single payment on July 1st, 2017 as provided by Section 12-144 of the Connecticut Gen, General Statutes, and except that any tax on any motor vehicle shall be due and payable in full on July 1st, 2017 as provided in Section 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes, and that the solid waste service charge be set at $235 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, N two.
I move to approve the transfer of uncollectible property taxes to the suspense tax book.
Second.
If you remember, we do this every year, and the total sum is fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N three.
I move to award bid number two hundred and forty-seven, exterior lighting replacement various buildings to Electrical Energy Systems Corporation of Southington, Connecticut, at a contract cost of nine hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Second.
We're excited that this project has been on the books for a while, and if you remember, it was with our performance contract and some grants, no taxpayer money is being used for this, and this is to do the exterior lighting at seven public school facilities and the town hall. So we opened bids, and we checked the references, and we are recommending Electrical Energy Systems Corporation of Southington. Just to note that we are holding on the high school based on what's happening with the high school project. So the bid has been, it's, it's included, the high school is included in this, but obviously, we won't be doing the high school, it would be included in the high school project.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, N four.
I move to award bid number two sixty, Unionville sidewalk replacement to Morris Concrete Service, Inc. of Springfield, Massachusetts, at a contract cost of two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
This is our matching grant, it's, it's in our upcoming capital budget, and it's the various streets in Unionville, including Plattner, Mills, Mill, Plattner Mill School and Maple Avenue.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
All right, I move to award bid number two hundred and sixty-one, drainage improvements Mohawk Drive to Complete Construction Company of Ansonia, Connecticut, at a contract cost of two hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
This is drainage improvements up on Mohawk Drive. It's six, one thousand six hundred linear feet of storm drainage system on Mohawk Drive. This is the low bid. What happens is that on this project, they will be doing the drainage first, and then next year, when that area of town is doing the road reconstruction, the top of the road, the paving, they will be doing the paving.
I have a question. With, when I, I just glanced at this, and some of the differences are just astronomical of what different pieces of the, you know? I mean, thousands of dollars different. Do you go, do you go through, and I don't know if this is a question for Russ, do you just, do you go through and everything that they, you know, they bid? Like if one thing is two thousand and another one's ten, and do you have to go through all of that to make sure that they're, it's what you want and what, you know?
Yeah, for the most part, we do our estimate on the project, they set our plan, and we come up with a number, and as Joe said before, we're, we're somewhere around three eight, and it's just the bidding comments that came in real well.
But like, if some, if one bidder bid seven thousand dollars for processed something or another, and then the other bidder, one bid five thousand, the other bidder bid ten thousand, how, is there a rhyme, do you understand why there would be a rhyme and reason to that?
Everybody has, puts money in different places, so.
Okay, I mean, and I'm, I'm not questioning, except that I'm looking at one bids ten thousand and one bids, you know, fifty-four. I, it's just, that is just like beyond my comprehension as to how you could do...
You don't know what one contractor has in stock, or what material he may have, or if they're starting paying for it through another job, maybe purchasing all brand new. It's hard to say.
Okay.
But the difference is it came in a lot lower, and I'll be back with Joe with it. Probably ought to want to have more money, because spend more money to get, or get our matching grant, but we have the mask, so it's a good thing we're going to get a lot more sidewalk done.
Great, okay, thanks a lot, Russ.
So Russ, on this document, in each box, there are two numbers.
We're talking about Mohawk Drive.
Mohawk?
Yeah.
Or whatever, sorry.
Yeah.
So like, and for the test pit, for bidder number one, it's nine ninety, and underneath that is twenty-nine seventy.
We have three test pits. Each, each test pit is nine hundred and ninety dollars. We have three test pits in the process.
Okay, that was multiplied by the estimated quantity.
Right. Basically, the, the, the top number in each one of the boxes would be the unit price.
Yeah.
And so you multiply that by the quantity, like you said, and you would get, you're supposed to get that. What, we, we do that as, actually, Russ checks the quantities, or checks for, obviously, being the engineer, he checks all the engineering part of it, being the mathematician, we check the math, so. We put it in the format to make sure that the unit price, the quantity totals up to the actual price.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, we are now on to N six.
I move that Simsbury Bank of Simsbury, Connecticut be added to the list of depositories for town funds and investments.
Second.
Any questions?
The Finance Department is recommending Simsbury Bank, and they've become, have begun baking relationship with Connecticut municipalities.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Seven.
I move that pursuant to section fifty-five dash ten of the Town of Farmington Purchasing Ordinance, the bidding requirements under section fifty-five dash one be waived so that the Police Department may contract with Associated Security Corporation to update the town's alarm monitoring system at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Second.
As you can see here, we're asking to waive the bidding requirements. We have a very old alarm system that's been in use over ten years, and in working with determining what to do, it would be to abandon the system, which we really don't want to do, update the current system with the latest software, and replace whatever existing equipment will not operate within the new software. Of the three choices, the, we thought that we would upgrade, and that would be our current vendor. And so it would be a price of cost not to exceed thirty thousand, nine hundred dollars. And this, that's the vendor that installs, obviously, and maintains our current system.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Eight.
I move to accept Country Central Way as a town road from the intersection of Melrose Drive, a distance of approximately one thousand thirty-three feet to its existing terminus.
Second.
Any questions?
So this is the road, the intersection of Melrose Drive, a distance of approximately one thousand thirty-three feet. The town of TPZ approved the development as a town road. The developer is the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and they've completed the public improvements, the road behind there.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Nine.
I move to set a special town council meeting on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, if needed, for approval of the FHS Building Committee's schematic design package and cost estimate.
Second.
Again, this, we have a meeting set for Tuesday night, the twenty-third. We're just putting a date on the twenty-fourth, just in case there's questions that we need to have answered, and if we need the meeting, we could come back the next day, so.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Ten.
I move to set a public hearing on May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, at seven oh five PM in the Town Hall Council chambers for the purchase of four forty and eighty-six fifty-eight Plainville Avenue, owned by Robin E. Herman trustee and George Gravolsky, approximately thirteen acres for a purchase price of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, subject to receipt of an acceptable Phase One environmental site assessment report, and subject to due diligence, including but not limited to title search.
Second.
There was a request to have this at the next town council meeting rather than at the June thirteenth meeting. This would be a public hearing. We would go through the maps, but obviously, this is an open space recreation. The property is thirteen acres. It's zoned right now R twenty with a single-family residential minimum of twenty thousand square foot lots. It's the last significant open space in a densely developed neighborhood, and the acquisition cost would be nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So at the next meeting, which would also be with the high school, we'd have the public hearing on this first, and then, then we would go from, and then we would refer it to an eight dash twenty-four, and the council would discuss it in the, at the July town council meeting, fully discuss it.
So the item we have in our packet is incorrect?
The June thirteenth date is wrong.
Okay.
On the, on the updated sheet that I handed out with Meredith Redd, she put the other date on it.
And that was because after this went out, we changed the date. Any questions?
So I'm not sure exactly why we're doing that.
Because the presenter couldn't be here in June.
Ah, okay. It seems like we're moving this public hearing to our busiest meeting of the year.
Well, or it's to move it to the next one. So I, I just felt out of, you know, wanting the person to come to, who would do it, you know, he couldn't be here in, in June, so. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Eleven.
I move to approve the following property tax refunds as shown on agenda item N eleven.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Okay, we have executive session number one.
Okay, I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss attorney-client privileged communications exempt from disclosure, and that attendance in the executive session shall be limited to members of the town council, the town manager, the town attorney by phone, and the finance director at nine forty PM.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.